Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of Tallahassee City Commission to order. It is Wednesday, March 22 at 3:02 in the afternoon. Welcome. We've got a full agenda, so let's get right to it. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my honor and privilege to introduce Iman Rashad Mujahid, who will be providing the invocation today as we move into the season of Ramadan. Iman, thank you so much. Please stand for the invocation.
Thank you very much. Let us pray. In God's name, the merciful benefactor, God the merciful redeemer. We pray for our city and our leaders. Help them as our leaders, dear Lord, accept the office which they have been elected to with truth and honor. Help them administer their duties in that office with truth and honor. Help them the humility of spirit to relinquish that office if it be the will of the people with truth and honor. Help us and them grow and evolve this city so it gives its best to all of its citizens. Help us work together so that we all have the opportunity to enjoy the excellent fruits of our collective efforts. And help us leave an expansive future for generations to come in this beautiful city of Tallahassee. We pray and ask these things in your name, God who created the heavens and the earth. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in deliverable, with liberty and justice for all. Iman, thank you so much. It's good to see you again. By the way, thanks for your service to this community. You have served on several advisory councils, and we certainly do appreciate it. Have a wonderful, wonderful day. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have a full agenda today. I do think colleagues will probably be able to get through the policy formation and direction before the public hearing at 6 o'clock. I would, because we have a long public hearing tonight with a lot of agenda items. Maybe do a hard stop around 5:30 so we could take a break, but we'll see where we are, and we'll go from there at the time. Mr. Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have any presentations before the commission today?
No, sir, not today.
Do we have any announcements?
No announcements.
Okay. Do we have any appearances by other governmental entities?
No, sir.
We are on the consent agenda. Have any items been pulled off the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Mr. Clark, do we have any comment on the consent agenda?
Just one second, Mayor. I just got a couple of speaker cards. I don't think we have anything for consent, but want to be sure. No, sir. No speakers on consent.
Move consent.
The consent agenda has been properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We have no introductions or ordinances this evening. We are on policy formation and direction, 12.01. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an informational item regarding an update on the sheriff's counsel on the status of men and boys. I'd like to recognize the sheriff and his leadership team, Mr. Cave, as well as Assistant Sheriff Argath Gilmore. They're here to provide you an update. You'll require, you'll recall last February, the city was involved in the establishment of this, excuse me, applying $140,000 to create this. And so it's very timely that the sheriff is willing to come and provide an update, and so we have placed this at the top of your agenda. I'll turn it over to Sheriff McNeil.
Sheriff McNeil, welcome back to the city chambers. We appreciate your service. We are blessed to live in a community where the law enforcement agencies work so well together seamlessly. I want to thank you for hosting the gathering today, the lunch. I'm sorry I could not stay for the bulk of it in preparation for meeting tonight, but what an incredible turnout. I don't know about you, but it's, it's, it's great to see our community partners come together like that.
Absolutely.
And I can't wait to hear more about it. But the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager and Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you an update on a project that you were front and center on bringing to fruition. Let me walk you back to, in fact, how we came to this point from my perspective. Some six years ago, I said to this community that if we are going to wrestle this issue of crime to where we have the kind of city that we all dream of and aspire to be involved in, we would have to make sure that our efforts included not only law enforcement, but included the entire community. Leon County Sheriff's Office, we called that initiative and that effort "All In." We quickly realized, as you do, that these issues of crime that are so pervasive in our community, particularly as it relates to gun crime, are problems that are beyond the scope of the work that we do in law enforcement. In fact, we looked at these issues as a health problem. So we tried to address these issues as we went about asking you and County Commission, along with the school board, PPD, obviously always our partners with us in dealing with all these issues, and with our, our school system. We went about and we created the Council on the Status of Men and Boys. I said to the commission then, and I say to you today, that our first effort in trying to bring this initiative to full capacity began with our efforts to reach out to the federal government. We reached out to the U.S. Department of Justice, and we gave them a plan, basically, of what we were going to try to do. And they looked at that and agreed with us that this is, in fact, a robust effort to deal with the gun violence, not only here in Tallahassee, but perhaps across the country. The Department of Justice grant and the funding, $1.4 million, focused on our achieving these four things: the development of a violence reduction strategic plan, and we have; research done by Florida State University; an assessment and evaluation process of planning that is ongoing, and we've achieved that with Florida State; the next thing was to create three navigator positions, and we've accomplished that; and the last thing was the Violence Intervention and Support Services would be extended for some two to three years. And we're in the process of making that come to fruition as well. The place where we are today is this: we have the Council of Status of Men and Boys established. We've made significant progress. We are currently treating some 250 youth in our community above and beyond the scope of the work that we were given the dollars to do. We have a relationship with We Are All We Need, one of our partners. We are going to scale that up from 250, hopefully, to about 500 over that three-year period of time, depending on what the needs are in our community. We today are embarked in discussions with Florida A&amp;M University. We have in mind, as the research told us and informed us, that most of the kids involved in the shootings, who are in fact suspended from school, are placed in second chance schools. And so we've embarked on a, hopefully, a contract that we will soon come to fruition with Florida A&amp;M University, where we no longer suspend kids from schools, but we actually suspend kids into what we're creating as an incubator at Florida A&amp;M University, their School of Psychology. That is a cost that's above and beyond what we currently have from the grant that we received. We're completely obligated to making sure that comes to fruition, because we believe the data speaks for itself that 85% of the youth who involved in, who are involved in shootings were either expelled from school or in second chance schools. So that is the place which we focused on, trying to make sure we drive the crime down in our community. So I come here today with my staff, and we have, one, to ask of you, one, we believe that these issues and the staffing needs that we have going forward, particularly with Florida A&amp;M University, that's, we've calculated right now that to achieve the outcomes we're looking for, we'd need about another $260,000 to achieve those outcomes. We also realize that we also need additional dollars for the partnership we already have with We Are All We Need in terms of getting to that capacity number in our community. From the 250 and the 50 we're currently dealing with, the 250 that we have a goal for, but that 500 youth that are out there, so we don't leave anyone behind. And that includes, and I want to make sure this is very clear to everyone, this isn't a focus merely on boys. This is a focus on families, and that's what the research tells us. It's about families and getting involved in those families in a way that's different than we have ever before in this community. So I am extremely happy about where we're going. As the mayor indicated to you earlier, this morning, we had a meeting of something close to 100 or so providers in our community, who are providers of various services that we will need to partner with as well, who are essential to our abilities to turn the tide in our community as it relates to crime. We are poised and ready to go. And the last thing I will say to you before I turn it over to, and I hope he's here by now.
He's here.
Our Executive Director, Roy King. Let me say that I know these are complicated issues we're talking about. I don't expect to walk in here to the city commission and ask for $267,000, and you say, "Here you go, Sheriff." What we hope to do is to have a workshop here shortly to talk about and delve deep into these, give you a complete briefing about what we're trying to do and how we plan to do it. And I believe you'll find, like I have, that we're on the right track. We can, in fact, do this right here in Tallahassee. So with that, let me turn it over to Executive Director for the Council on the Status of Men and Boys, Director Roy King.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. King, thank you for joining us. I was telling the sheriff earlier how pleased I was to see all of the community partners that came out today, not only because of their interest in our community, but also, quite frankly, in the support of you and the council. And it was, it was wonderful. It really was. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all. Let me catch my breath for a second. The meeting went, you know, extremely well that we just came from, and I was talking so long, I didn't get a bathroom break.
Whoa.
Uh, 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 caused my tardiness. I know they're queuing up their presentation, just being honest, man.
Right.
They're, they're queuing up the presentation, but in that meantime, we are here today, first and foremost, to be able to provide you an update as to the great work and things we've been able to make happen in these last eight months since I started in this position. You all made an important investment in the Council on the Status of Men and Boys, which allowed the work we've been able to do that's gotten us to this point to be successful. I'm extremely thankful for that. And so one of the first things that I wanted to do today is to briefly introduce you all to our team. And so they are here, they'll just stand to be recognized. But in addition to myself, we have four navigators. And so one of the first things I did was bring on Kristina Logan as our community-based navigator, and she is that person that is the liaison between the community and our service providers. And so a big part of that meeting today was her connecting with those over 100 providers that we had in attendance. We started this work with them because next to you all, they are, they are the frontline for our community. They're, they're our servants. And so that first presentation was aligned up for them because none of this happens without the work they do day in and day out, and we needed to secure their buy-in and make sure that they understand that they are very valuable. And so Ms. Logan is our navigator to work with those providers and assisting the youth that we're working with through this process. We have a school-based navigator, Harold Edwards, who does that exact same thing but inside the schools. And so he is our liaison to all things school, over 17-year educator of our schooling system, subject matter expert. And then also, we have two life coach navigators, and they got a chuckle out of it. One of them is Mr. Norman Billups, who you may be familiar with, and he's standing. And the other is Karonte Donaldson. And so they're similar in height stature, stature, but a little different in age makeup. And so that was by intent. See, Norm brings that father, grandfather role, and a lot of our young men respond to that, while some of them respond better to that younger brother, cousin, uncle role, and Karonte, much younger, and he kind of meets that. And so that is our, our team of, of navigators. And then I have the great privilege of serving as our executive director. And so they are awesome, they're all here today with us. And so do we have the slides?
We have the... We do not have the presentation? Oh, we're waiting on it?
Okay. Well, at any rate, the three navigators, I'll just kind of update you all to the grant we received. And so October last year, we were awarded a federal grant for a little bit under $1.5 million from the Bureau of Justice of Assistance. That grant allowed us to hire the three additional navigators, Mr. Donaldson, Mr. Edwards, and Mr. Billups. Additionally, inside of that, we rent in dollars to be able to do something that we knew had to happen in our community. So the, the grant is a Community Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative grant, which allows us to create, for the first time in our community, a gun violence reduction and intervention plan that is unique to, to the needs of our community. And so those three navigators were supported through that grant. You all understand, I won't belabor you with the, the details of the anatomy and how I got here and how this got here, and have the grant is going to support deeper on that at a higher level within the grant. Oh, there we go. So I'll kind of go through this quickly. You all, of course, obviously, are very instrumental in our other partners and our local government in getting us to this point. And so in all things, we acknowledge the investments that you've made to get us established and rolling. And again, we, you all are all very familiar with the cost of a homicide, with the anatomy of the homicide. Sheriff introduced our community in November of 2021, and the data from that that supported the request for us to develop in our community a council on the Status of Men and Boys to aggressively look at and unifying our community, existing resources, and organizing us all together. Again, all, all the steps that we're taking, it's evidence-based, trauma-informed, and following a public health model. And so the council's mission and vision, simply stated, and I'll just kind of read it quickly, is to unify existing agencies and organizations and individuals to coordinate resources, funding, and services under a multidisciplinary plan for reducing homicides and non-fatal shootings in Leon County; establish specific goals and objectives to address the disparities and challenges men and boys experience in violence, criminal justice, education, employment, and health. And all that's saying is that there are many sub factors of gun violence in our community, and our goal is to address all of them, to develop those solutions needed to have an immediate impact on the gun violence in our community. And so I am also here happily to introduce the selected individuals to serve on our governing body. So we had, again, conducted a very aggressive process of trying to identify that first body of people who would serve in, in this capacity, work with us to, to stand up this strong organization that you've all invested in. So I'm proud to kind of share with you all the, the names of those people today. We had eight of them this morning, and it was difficult to get them all back out here today, but that was kind of their formal introduction in the community. Many of the names I'm sure you're familiar with have been doing this work in different capacities, very diverse group of community, education, service providers, you name it. We were very intentional about trying to bring together a diverse group of people to look at these issues that we're researching. And so they are our partners in this, as they will be helping us do some of those additional standing up things for the council as we make this a permanent entity. And so I just want to give you an update on what we've already been doing with our navigators. And so one of the first things we knew we had to do was establish a formal relationship with the school board. And so in November, we executed an MOU, following the informed research from the anatomy of, of working with 50 students in Gazvini, which is Second Chance Success, where the students who are attending alternative learning environment are housed. And we decided on working with them because the research showed us that they are at the highest risk of, of being involved in gun violence because they already, most of them have some involvement with our criminal justice system. I was sharing, we've been going there almost weekly as a team, but now with our navigators working individually with them and in a group monthly, one of the young men who was wearing an ankle monitor told me he wanted to do something different, and pointed to the monitor and said, "I want to get this off. I want to do music." And while I'm not the musical expert, I know the resources, I know where to find them in this community, and I've committed to him to connect him to those. And so, again, just sharing with you the relationship building that we're forming. And he's, he's already opened up about some things, and we're not worried about your past, we're only looking forward. And we do that through forming these meaningful relationships and connecting you to resources that we have in our community that will allow you to make the changes you need, and connecting you to a life coach who was there during the day and after hours, if needed, to support you. And so even tomorrow, as we talk, we are preparing to, to meet with that group of students, to do small breakouts, to fellowship, to listen, more than anything, and, and be there to address the needs that they have, but also the needs of their families. So we're excited about that, and they are excited about the lunch more than anything, if I'm honest. It will allow us to get in the door to do the coaching we need to do. And then next week, our navigators will be back out there individually. So super excited about those, and it's been, it's been really good. And so we project from those three surveys that were provided to us in terms of the data surrounding the cost of a homicide, that we will save more than one life and save way more than that $5 million range, $800,000 to $5 million range of what they project the cost of a homicide to be. And so we know that saving life is way more valuable, but I'm not a betting man, I'm not a rich man, but I'd rather see these young men be successful than be embodied in millions of dollars anyway. And so we've got a mantra, we've got some things that we've created, vessel captain things that they recite, and it's a beautiful thing to see. All of them aren't black men and boys, but they're all males, and we're supporting them and their families right now. So what is CVIPI? So I mentioned the Community Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative grant that we received. I talked about the, the dollar amount that we've gotten, again, over three years. The first year's money is solely dedicated to the planning. This is a, a national model approach dedicated to the planning. While what we're doing in the schools, we've already done some steps that most communities haven't in conducting an anatomy of the homicide. They're just starting, but we, we'd already done that. And so we didn't want to wait. We knew where there were some areas we could have immediate impact, and so that's what we're doing while we, this first year, develop our plan for our community for an initiative that will be implemented in year two and three to stop some of the issues and circumstances surrounding gun violence in our community. So the grant has really four big focuses: Introduce Evidence and Form CVI Strategies; Implement Comprehensive Evidence-Based Violence Intervention Programs Built on Partnerships, which is why we started again with our community of service providers, those servants first, because we need them, and their experience and their involvement daily in the operations. Initiatives are expected to be trauma-responsive, incorporate the needs and perspectives of victims of community violence, and develop CVI strategies that include a focus on addressing the impact of community violence on children and youth. And then the, the principles that OJP has that they expect you to operate in: Targeted Violence Interventions and Support for Highest Need Groups; Community Centered and Equity Focused; Integration with Public Safety, Public Health; Strategic Data Driven and Performance Focused. And I'm happy to say that our program aligns with all of those. And I do want to share, too, we use a navigator system term, but it's often sometimes referred to as interrupters as well. Our high-level deliverables are to establish, conduct, translate, and document. The big thing is establishing a multidisciplinary team of stakeholders and community members to serve as the planning team. We've identified 30 members of our community at high different levels, from the neighborhood resident to the accredited doctor of research, all to be a part of this team for us to develop this plan and making sure that we have representatives for all voices involved in gun violence at the table, conducting those planning meetings, assessing the research and developing that plan, translating those results. There's no good in creating something if, if it's only allowed in your community. And so by virtue of the grant, we had the opportunity to attend a week conference in February, which really empowered me a lot to know that there's communities all around this nation doing this work in the position we are doing the work. And it was just refreshing to know we're not alone, we're not starting something by ourselves. We have a, a community through this grant process of support. And so then document. We all understand if it's, if it's not written anywhere, if it's not supported on paper, it doesn't exist, it's not able to be sustained. And so that is a high deliverable, to be able to document everything that we're doing. So these were the deliverables that we've already met as a council, unrelated to the grant, but things we said we were going to do. Establish this body of the Council of Status of Men and Boys. Facilitate efforts to develop a violence reduction plan, and I'm going to share with, with that very shortly. Collaborate with a research partner. We chose to do that with the best. It just so happened that the best to do criminal justice and criminally-related research is in our backyard at Florida State University through their School of Criminology and Criminal Justice. So we brought them in as a subawardee partner to look at the shootings we had in our community in 2022, not just the homicides, but also the non-fatal shootings, as well as those, excuse me, those domestic violence events that we had happen, so that as we're doing this plan, we're not using the anatomy research, which was from 2015 to 2020. We're using the most recent research that our community has to provide, and we've brought in the most recognized, ranked researcher that just so happens to be in our community to be the partner to do that with us. And so they're with us for the whole three years, this first year providing that research so that as we plan, we're planning with that of the most recent data that we need to be able to develop real solutions around the problem in real time. And so recruit, hire, and onboard the three navigators who you are, were able to be introduced to. And so I talked to you about Florida State, our research partner, over the next three years. I want to also talk to you about another Tallahassee-based but national public relations firm, Saltre &amp; Mitchell, who we've brought onboard to conduct our community listening sessions as well as our community survey. One of the unique things about the survey that we'll be releasing here very soon is that it is focused on those ZIP codes that have high crime. While we will involve the whole community in this process, we need to hear the voices loudest of the people experiencing the trauma being created from the gun violence in our community. So they've developed the survey for us that we're preparing to share to the community and conduct those listening sessions to be able to hear directly from those experiencing the gun violence trauma. What, what steps do they, they see that they need to have happen? What are the things that we need to be looking at? The whole goal of this is to have the planning team, have our governing body, have our team, have all of you working together. A great opportunity for us as a community to tackle this together, but we have to start with, with those sometimes who are least heard and served. And so that survey will allow us to do that. The partners we gathered today should begin to share with us opportunities to be able to have those listening sessions with some of the people that they're serving. So Saltre &amp; Mitchell is, is our partner there. So in order to really... So in order to really have a strong plan, we needed somebody who's done this work. We only could identify four national providers that provide any level of gun violence intervention and prevention initiative strategy, strategic planning. And so we already pulled the best, just so happened to be in our community for research, for community surveying, support, collaboration, and we wanted the best partner in developing our strategic plan. Gun violence initiatives, reduction, planning is a unique thing. There aren't many entities in place to do this work and have done it successfully. So we identified the best one we could find, which was the National Institute on Criminal Justice Reform, NICJR, to be our partner in planning. And so they've conducted strategic planning, gun violence strategic planning processes and plans for some of our nation's most crime-stricken communities, and we're able to develop and see results from that process. And so here in April, we will be having a kickoff meeting with them to formally introduce them as our partner to the community as they navigate our planning team, use the information from those community surveys, the information from the data from FSU to allow us and our constituents to make decisions with real-time, most up-to-date information by being facilitated by one of the only groups that do this work so that we can develop a plan here in the next six months to be able to then in the next two years aggressively invest all of the resources that we have into those implementations that come out of that. And so we're extremely excited and grateful to have them as our partner in this and excited for next month when they come here and are able to interface with our planning team, all of you and our citizens. And we're super excited about their involvement because we wanted to make sure we only were going to have one opportunity to be able to develop for our community a community violence intervention plan. And if we were going to do it, we're going to pour every resource into doing it right. And so we're very excited about that. And so in short, our strategy again, deploy the navigation system, identify, implement additional strategies. A big part of this is, you know, improving the trust between law enforcement and the community. You all understood, and when you made the investment, that this has to have law enforcement influence and involvement, but it needed to be community-led. And that's why I'm here, that's why our team of community experts are here to be able to be that body to support the efforts on both sides and using those, leveraging those relationships we've already established from doing this community work for so long, but now for a greater purpose and greater capacity in our community. Establish the capacity, provide violence interruption within the community. And so that was one thing we already knew we needed, some kind of interruption system. So that dollar, we've already added some dollars for investment in our implementation for some level of violence interruption. And NICJR has a process and is working with us as we do the plan to be able to, at the end of the plan, immediately hit the ground running with what that looks like exactly. Enhance data and cross-sharing. Again, we all understand that the data is one of the most critical things to doing anything and in planning. You have to always be going back to it to make sure that you're staying true to the research and true to the findings and then implementing the CVI strategies. And so we're super excited that over the next six months, we'll be working with these partners to develop for, again, the first time in our community, a community violence intervention initiative and plan. And so I'm going to invite Sheriff back up to kind of talk to some of the other gaps that we saw. The grant, while it's great, that funding over the next three years is great. There are still some holes we've already identified, excuse me, and opportunities related to the already research we have with having an impact on some of our suspended and expelled students. And I'll allow Sheriff to kind of speak to that.
Mr. King, thank you. Sheriff, you going to bring it in for Landon here for us?
Yes, sir.
All right.
In fact, I've already talked about the cost issues that we are facing. We are partnering with, again, Florida State University with that component. There's a cost associated with that. We are partnering with All We Need, which is an interrupter organization that seeks and finds our kids in our community and works with them. There's a cost associated with that. As I said before, I don't want to just come here and say, you know, I need this, we need that, but to simply have a workshop, we sit down and go over with you exactly where we're going and what we're trying to do. I will tell you, as Roy has indicated, my belief is that whether we get the funding that we need in these environments or not, we are completely all in in making this happen in Leon County Sheriff's Office. I will hook, crook, or however to get this done because it is absolutely, from my perspective, the initiative that will address the issues, help address the issues of violence in our community, dealing with the families. As I said, and Chief Revell and I have talked about for a number of years, we've seen generation after generation of kids, we arrested the grandfather, the father, the son, grandson, and quite honestly, time we tried to do something to stop that. I will stop there, Mr. Mayor, and entertain any questions you or the commission may have.
So there is no action on the table except for to accept the report. We do have time for questions. Let me check in also, do we have any public comment on this?
One speaker.
Okay. Why don't we hear from the public real quick and then we'll open it up for the discussion. So Mr. Clerk.
Our speaker on this item is Stanley Sims. Although Mr. Sims knows I'll share for the audience, for other speakers, speakers will each have three minutes for remarks with a light in front of the mayor and mayor pro temp that will be green and then eventually turn yellow and red when your time's expired.
Thanks for joining us. You name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm Stanley Sims at 1320 Avondale Way. My wife lets me and my dog let me come. I'm here because I had one of their sandwiches, they were pretty good. It was packed, wall to wall. I'm supporting this program because words have become deeds. I'm not supporting this program because I have a grant, not that I have not applied, but my good friend Ron says that my grant doesn't meet the qualifications. What's my point? My point is, real relationships matter. Real relationships matter in good times and bad times. I want to be funded, I'm not funded, and I understand why I'm not funded, but I still can be a part of the team because we are all in. What the sheriff did not tell us, and what Mr. King did not tell us, is that this model, even though it had some objections at front, because it is research-based and those standards are challenging, but what is done, it is maybe not forced, but open. Individuals like myself who were willing to really authentically want to participate has required us to collaborate with those who can. So more partners like myself in this community is seeking the help of united partnerships with structures and learning how to meet certain goals and, you know, objectives. Learning these big words up here in Tremblin. And so when you have this type of transparency, and when I can pick up the phone and call the sheriff and get a response, and my address ain't in Golden Eagle, I'm at 1320 Avondale Way, bought my house during the housing crisis, rent programs, and get that kind of response, and when he busy, he sends me over to Ron, poor Ron. It's about relationships. When there's a yes, and when there's a no. And I thank God for the relationship that I have with the Leon County Sheriff's Department. I give the rest of my time.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any other public comment?
I have no other speakers on this item.
Again, the motion will be just to simply accept the report, but I'll kick it off by saying, Mr. King, fine job. And again, watching the work of all the service providers today coming together was just absolutely amazing. And as I said today, Sheriff McNeil, this city commission stands behind you, we put our money behind you, and I'm sure each individually will do what we can to help as well, and we appreciate it. I agree with you, I look forward to it. Mr. Manager, if you wouldn't mind, go ahead and check in the schedule, when there's a time when we can get together in more of a discussion atmosphere, I think that would be great. But let's open it up and have comment. Questions? Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sheriff, and the entire council crew. Nice to see you all here today. I mean, I think this is an important initiative, and I think, you know, we're all, if you succeed, we all succeed. If you're successful, Tallahassee's successful. And I know we ask a lot of law enforcement, and you didn't necessarily have to do this, but I think you saw the real need and you answered the call and you stood up and stood this up. And, you know, I'm grateful for that, and I think it's powerful to see it all come together and all the community partners that you brought along along the way. And I think you're frankly on the right direction, especially when we talk about students being suspended and expelled. I mean, that outreach is so critical. And my conversation has always been, you know, how do we make sure we get all of them? You know, where do we have to get to as an organization at a funding level, whatever it is, that nobody's slipping through the cracks? At least we tried with each individual child that could be going down this path. So I wholeheartedly support working together how we can in the future, happy to be a part of a workshop as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Commissioner Richardson, I saw your hand.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I am excited for what I've heard and seen today, and it brings back a very vivid, but unfortunately, unfortunate incident for me and a young man who was killed on the church grounds, not hardly 25 yards from my house. And he happened to be a personal friend of my daughter. And I share that because my thought is, why didn't we do this before he had to lose his life, Sheriff? And I appreciate you and Mr. King for all the work that you've done, because without you and what you have provided, we still may not be where we are today. And so I am just so encouraged by all that I've seen and heard today, what you are, the work that you have put into this, especially in the short lifespan of the Council on the Status of Men and Boys. Roy, you have done a phenomenal job. The time and energy that you've put into it, the staff that you've assembled, many of them I know personally. I met with Ms. Logan when I was working at Lively, and we used to try to get inmates into our career and technical programs. So it's good to see her onboard. But I think we're off to a great start. This is going to be a community-wide effort. We can't say that it's going to be just the Sheriff's Department or just the Council on the Status of Men and Boys. This is going to be a community-wide effort, y'all, and it ain't going to end in three years. This is going to have to be sustained over many years, if not decades, because this issue didn't happen overnight, and it's not going to be solved overnight. But we have to be determined as a community to save our young people, our black boys especially, because they are the ones who are the victims of this kind of senseless violence, not only in Tallahassee, but in communities throughout this state and nation. And I think we can be the model for what others look to, to help them solve these kinds of issues and provide those kinds of opportunities for our young people. I don't think it's rocket science. Sheriff has identified what the issues are in the report. We know who these kids are, where they come from, the kinds of families in many instances they're involved with. And so we just need to reach out to them, as has already started to happen, and put them on the right path to a productive life, which we know that they can achieve if we give them those opportunities. And so I'm excited, Mr. Mayor, my colleagues on the commission, on what we are embarking on, and I think we can do it as a community. You know, we don't have to bring in experts from Washington and Philadelphia and Virginia who, you know, it's going to take them a while to even get to know their way around the community. But if we've got the experts already here and teams assembled, why not go with the home folk, as they say? And so I'm looking forward to a workshop where we begin to discuss those kinds of issues and move this initiative forward as quickly as possible, expeditiously, if I could use that term, because I don't want to see another life lost unnecessarily because we spent more time talking than doing. So I'm all in, Sheriff, and we're looking forward to this initiative moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you, Sheriff, and your team. I had the opportunity to meet with Deputy Sheriff Agartha Gilmore and Chief of Staff Ron Cave, and we had a really great discussion. I echo what's been said by my colleagues. I'm excited to see, well, to hear the update and see how far we've already come and then to see what's next. And I watched that TED Talk that you sent. I found it really interesting, a really unique perspective, and I'll post it on Facebook in case those who are, you know, don't know what I'm talking about right now in the room. But, you know, it talked about what we expect of boys and what we put on boys historically and the roles that we've always assigned them, you know, either to literally go out and sacrifice their lives for us in war and battle or to just make money. And historically, as the role of women in the feminist movement has evolved and redefined what women and people can do in their roles, we haven't really seen that in the same way for men and for boys. And I think that that is a problem, and I think that the family unit, thinking about the sensitivity, the parts of all of us that need love, that crave love, and that will go to all kinds of lengths to find acceptance and meaning, we can't really address these issues if we're not talking about those matters of the heart. So I really appreciate how comprehensive this, your plan is, because it's really addressing every aspect of our community and every aspect of just our human needs as people. And so I think that's really important, and I'm really excited to see what's going to come of this. And as my colleague said, I mean, I 100% believe in us. I believe in this community. There's no reason why we can't do this. So I'm looking forward to it, and if I can do any help, I will be here.
Mayor Pro temp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sheriff, and your staff, and to Royal King and your team. I may be, I'm not sure, I may be the only one in the room who is a mother of three boys, who got a call from the school one time from Cheryl Carlisle Brown to tell me that my son was being suspended. And she knew she could make that call because she knew what was going to happen next. What happened next was that, I'll see you in the morning, because, one, I didn't accept that. I went to find out what my boy had done. I had the luxury of being able to do that, but all parents don't get that opportunity. And so sometimes the call comes and it goes unanswered. So I want to say thank you to Cheryl Carlisle Brown for always being willing to make the call, but she also had my permission to handle it, if I couldn't get there to handle it. You don't do that to teachers anymore, but she knew what to do and let me know later. So and what happened as a result of that was initially he had a 10-day suspension. Now, what was he going to do for 10 days? We were all at work. So I got there the next morning, it immediately went to three days in-school suspension because we got the facts of the case and realized that somebody didn't write it up right. It wasn't Cheryl Carlisle Brown, it was someone else who didn't write it up right. So parents, make sure you investigate. Make sure you don't let your kids get railroaded down a rabbit hole that it's hard to get them back through. Fortunately, during that time, this was in the 90s, there was a program at TPD. Fortunately, during that time, this was in the 90s, there was a program at TPD. Show Cap, I think, is what it was called. Connie Jenkins, she was Connie Jenkins at that time, but she's Connie Jenkins now, was at Fairview doing this program and brought my son into that program. And the long and the short of it is, is that because of those interventions, we avoided him having a record because of some misbehavior. I see what you're doing, Sheriff Royal King. That's what you all are doing. Tempo, that's what you all are doing. You're trying to make sure that we don't lock these kids away and throw away the key because there's good in everybody. We've just got to know how to get to it. It's not their fault if we don't figure out how to get to it. They're trying to tell us. We just got to be able to listen and learn how to get to them. So thank God for the precursor to the status of men and boys that saved my son, and I want to be a part of helping to save other sons and daughters, because we know too. I've talked to a school board member. Our girls are with the, oh, boy. Our girls are out there. I'm just going to say that. I'm the mother of sons, not daughters. I got granddaughters, but, you know, what I'm saying. So what we've got to do is, we've got to create this safety net in our community so that we, we used to say, leave no kid behind. No, we can't lose them, period. So we've got to have a safety net. And most of us know what FUBU mean, right? For us, by us, right here. That's what we need to do. We need to create something or we further develop something that is for us, Tallahassee, by us, Tallahassee. So I'm looking forward to being able to participate and be a part of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll make the motion to accept the report as their second to the motion.
Second.
It's been a second about Mayor Protim. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Thank you very much, Sheriff. Thank you, Mr. King. Certainly appreciate it. We're on item number 12.02, legislative update. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the third week in the legislative session. It is very busy, very impactful to cities and other areas, and so this is our update. Each year, we submit a list of appropriation requests, among other things, and from time to time, there will be policy items that the legislature is considering. We often engage with those through our various associations and trade groups like the League of Cities, the Florida Municipal Electric Association, all of which is happening, and so we want to provide you this update tonight. Dr. Thomas Whitley, our Director of Strategic Innovation, will provide the update. Since you have received the agenda item, obviously, it's a very fluid time, and so things have changed, and Dr. Whitley will provide that update.
Dr. Whitley?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, and Commissioners. As the manager said, we're in the third week of session. Y'all know very well, it's a rapidly changing landscape. The information that's in your agenda item was always going to be still, being a week old at this point, so I'll provide a brief update. I'll try to keep it brief. There have been over 1,700 bills filed. We're only going to talk about half of them today, if that's okay? No? The governor released his proposed budget. You've probably seen this. It's been a little while back now. That kind of creates a starting point, $114 billion budget. A couple of key things that it includes is a 5% across-the-board pay raise for state employees. It includes additional pay increases for law enforcement officers and correctional officers, and it fully funds the Sadowski Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That's a perennial issue in the state of Florida. We'll get to a bill related to that in a second. As the manager said, we make appropriations requests annually. We've had some success in the past couple of years with Tempo getting funded, recognizing the success there, the requests that we put forward this year in the agenda item. As of yesterday, I can report that the South Side Transit Center is included in the House budget for $500,000 and the Senate budget for $1 million. So we're cautiously optimistic about that. That's where it stands now. We'll keep you updated as that changes. We know how that is likely to continue to change and shift throughout the process, negotiations between the chambers and things of that nature. There are really three bills that I wanted to highlight, or three kind of collections of bills for you this afternoon. The first is Senate Bill 102 and its companion, House Bill 627. This is, these are comprehensive affordable housing bills. These are the priority of Senate President Pasadomo. There is a lot of good in this bill that we see, that our partners at the League of Cities and others see, over $700 million for affordable housing. Like the governor's budget, fully funds the Sadowski Fund, includes $252 million for ship funding, $259 million for sale funding, and codifies and includes $100 million for the Hometown Heroes Housing Program as well. That one also provides municipalities with the authority to provide property tax incentives for certain affordable housing developments. And so I think that that's something that, if it goes through in its current form, which it looks likely to, that the commission would be interested in, and we can, of course, bring more information back on that as it's appropriate when certain developments are coming before you. This item, this bill also prohibits any local government from enacting any form of rent control. It has passed the Senate unanimously on March 8th. It has passed all of its committees in the House and is headed to the House floor for a vote, where we expect passage. There are a number of, frankly, threats to local governments. There are kind of every session, y'all have all championed home rule. There continue to be threats there. Seem to be more this session than we have in a typical year. Two that I want to highlight, Senate Bill 798 and House Bill 975, solid waste management, which prohibits municipalities from prohibiting or unreasonably restraining private entities from getting in the solid waste business for, or recycling business for commercial, industrial, and multifamily residential. Through the work of a number of lobbyists, including our own and some others, that bill has been amended to exempt out municipalities that self-perform this with their own employees and own equipment. So that would include us, and so we're pleased with that exemption. And so we feel like we will be okay if this passes as it stands. It has passed its first committee stop in the House, and it's waiting to be heard in the Senate. Excuse me. And then finally, Senate Bill 1380 and House Bill 1331 on municipal utilities. Y'all have heard a lot about this. Y'all have been engaged in this process. It represents a pretty significant threat to municipal utilities around the state, all of them, electric, gas, water, and sewer. There were different versions of the bills. They've been amended to align, or they're in the process of being amended, the Senate Bill is, to align with the House bill. In that amendment, it has removed what was in there originally to bring municipal utilities under the regulation of the Public Service Commission. That has been taken out, but what still remains is a cap that's being instituted on transfers to the general fund. There's a, we could call it a formula, it's not really a formula in there. There's a methodology, a loose methodology that they include in the bill, and so we're doing a lot of work there. We are fully engaged on that. Our contract lobbyists are fully engaged. We're engaged with League of Cities and with FMEA on that as well. It was in the House Committee yesterday, did pass that committee, but it got temporarily postponed, and the Senate committee was supposed to be heard in yesterday. That is a maybe interim, but definitely a minor victory that we see on that. So we will continue to watch that. And then one note that I wanted to make, this is not included in the agenda item, but give you an update on some of our federal legislative efforts. You know that over the past couple of years, Congress has reinstituted community project funding requests. Typically, they're called earmarks. They don't like that terminology, but that's what they've been called traditionally, and we've had some success. Two years ago, excuse me, we received $4.5 million for the airport through a request through Congressman Dunn's office. We've been working with Congressman Dunn on a couple of requests this year, had a very productive meeting with him last week out at the airport, actually, and have had productive conversations, requests for the airport again, another airport request, and a request to support the training facility at the TPD headquarters. Those have been very favorable. The congressman gets to submit 15 projects, and at this point, we anticipate one, if not both, of our projects being on his list. A very brief update today. Happy to answer any questions, and as always, we continue to track it. The work that I'm doing is supported significantly by all of our department heads and their teams that are tracking legislation. As you can imagine, 1,700 bills, it's very wide-ranging, and so I really appreciate the support that we have across the organization, or our subject matter experts looking at this information as well. So with that, that's all I have, and I'll answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Dr. Whitley. Let's hear from the public. Do you have any public comment on this item?
We have one speaker, Stanley Sims.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
Stanley Sims, still at 1320. One of my issues of concern with this bill is also, and I may have the numbers wrong, and that's that House Bill 999, Freedom of Speech Protest, legislation, which is ruling against inclusion and diversionary policies, the denial of credible black history. Those things worry me on a state level. But what also worries me, Mayor Protim, on a municipal level, is some of the actions that our city manager has taken within this city hall.
Okay. Mr. Sims, we're concentrating on the legislative.
I'm aware of that.
And we'll have.
May I reclaim my time?
Just a second. We'll have time for un-agenda speakers at the time.
I'm reclaiming my time.
We're on the legislative.
I'm reclaiming my time.
Mr. Sims, we are on the legislative agenda. Go ahead, sir.
And what bothers me is some of those bills similar to the city managers of how citizens can address and come into this building. The custodial rights have been changed. That's similar lines up to some of these bills that are being passed to all the state. The wiping away of history. It's been similar doing here in this municipality, like the governor is doing in the state. The way black Americans are being treated in this state, especially women. They're being fired when they don't fall to his agenda are similar to this municipality. And that troubles me. And so as we legislate on the state Capitol, let's legislate in honesty and in truth. When we legislate about our law enforcement officers, let us legislate in honesty and in truth. I give you now the rest of my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clark.
No other speakers on this item that I have.
Okay, so the action would be simply to accept the report, but any questions for Dr. Whitley? I got Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Whitley?
Yeah, first off, I wanted to speak on the, I think it's 1331, the municipal utility. And I guess first off, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for representing our utility across the street in yesterday's committee hearing. I think it's very important. Have we calculated, if this were to pass, what type of hit to our general fund this would be?
We've done some initial calculations, Commissioner. That's a good question, but frankly, there's not enough information at this point to do a final calculation. There is, so the answer is, we've tried to work on some initial calculations, but we simply don't have enough information in the bill as it's written at this point to give you an answer that we'd be confident in.
Commissioner Matlow, let me jump in, because I had to do all the research. And for tomorrow, and Dr. Whitley's correct, it's been a moving target, so it's fluctuating. So if you look at a total prohibition of a utility transfer into general revenue, well, last year, Mr. Manager, we transferred.
50 million.
$50 million. Now, if I'm correct, that's about the same amount that we generate in property tax with the millage rate of 4.1?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So what you're talking about is if the legislature passed a 100% prohibition, just no utility transfer, you're talking about the equivalent of our entire millage rate right now, and that would be to maintain level. The way how the bill is written right now, and it's a very complicated formula, but the way how it's written right now, the impact would be roughly $10 million of a hit to the city. That could have changed today, we didn't, you know, it's a moving target, and we'll have to wait and see, and that's the House bill, so I'm not, is the House and the Senate still similar? Are they identical?
The amendment that's been filed, the strike law amendment that's been filed to the Senate bill would align it with the language in the House bill. And so the mayor is correct, Commissioner, that that is, that's a rough estimate. It's based on our best understanding of the formula as written, but it's not very clear.
Commissioner Matlow?
Understood, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recognize it's, anywhere in that range would be detrimental to the city of Tallahassee, and we appreciate the advocacy on behalf of our city on that. The other bill I wanted to ask about, which was reported, I think, in Florida Politics about the expansion of the Capitol Police jurisdiction, it was intimated in that article that it was directed at homeless individuals in the downtown area. Do we have any information on that?
Yeah, so that's a good question, Commissioner Matlow. We're familiar with that. Chief Revel's spoken with his counterpart over Capitol Police, so we do have more information on that. Our understanding at this point is that that's giving Capitol Police essentially the authority to do what it's already doing, which is to have jurisdiction over state buildings and their adjacent parking garages. And it reclassifies a place that, what they call the Capitol Complex, Memorial Park, but we don't have any understanding that from Capitol Police or FDLE's perspective, that has anything to do with the article that you referenced.
Thank you, Dr. Whitley. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Commissioner Matlow, I think the article sensationalized a little bit the intent of the bill, and, because I was, I had similar concerns of what exactly is the state trying to do. And it's my understanding, I mean, Capitol Police, they patrol the state office buildings and the parking garages, but it's never been codified? And so this request is simply codifying what they currently do? That's my understanding. If I'm misspeaking, that's correct. Yeah, so that's what we understand the bill to be right now.
Yeah. That's all for me.
Any other comments, questions? Oh, Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to follow up on that one, too, because when I read the article, I was absolutely incensed that Peter would write something like that in a publication that is shared probably worldwide, and he lives in St. Petersburg.
That's correct.
Not even a Tallahassee resident. I've lived in this town for 50 years, and I've never seen the kind of waste and deplorable conditions that he described in that article. I was really incensed about the picture that he painted of our downtown and our city, and to suggest that we took no actions to do anything about even the individual who was arrested and jailed, who had a mental health issue, and when it was reported to us, we took care of it. I've been out on rides with the host team, and I've seen what they've done downtown to clear up downtown of the homeless situation that we have here. It's nothing like what you would find in other cities, including St. Petersburg. And so I just want anybody who's listening today to know that we have a downtown improvement authority. I talked to Elizabeth the other day, and I asked her, you know, had they heard anything about all of this that was going on? And she was, she was a little surprised, too, to see that that kind of information would be placed in a publication of that type. So anybody who's listening, I think we certainly need to make sure that we make it clear that we're proud of our downtown, its aesthetics, its safety, the businesses that we have in downtown, the services that are provided to our residents and guests when they visit our downtown, and nothing could have been further from the truth than what was reported in that article. And so I just wanted to share that, because I was absolutely incensed when I read it. And the other issue, the other issue was the municipal utilities. I want to absolutely commend the mayor. I was there with him and the city manager yesterday at the committee meeting, and I want to commend. want to commend him for the job that he did in representing not only the city of Tallahassee, but all of the municipalities and co-ops that own and operate their municipalities. Mr. Mayor, you did a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
I mean, after his presentation, there were no questions to be asked. He was very thorough. It was clear he had done his homework and came prepared for the kinds of questions that were asked. And this thing that they, we're talking about this taxation without representation, you know, I don't know where that is coming from. I think, because, and the mayor did a good job of explaining the process that we go through when we look at establishing our utility rates, and that those individuals who live outside of the city limits, in the unincorporated area, especially in Leon County, where we only have one incorporated municipality, those who live in the unincorporated areas utilize the services within the city limits. I'm sure most of them probably work in the city, they use the roads, they're our neighbors, and they should. And the mayor left with, you know, we don't know of anyone. We have open public hearings, we have an opportunity for anyone to give input on those matters, and we have not gotten complaints that I know of, Mr. Mayor, maybe our customer service office can correct me if I'm wrong, of those who live in the unincorporated area who complain about not having access to us to give us input about the rates that we charge, or if they have any complaints about the kinds of utility rates or charges that the city imposes. And so again, Mr. Mayor, I want to commend you for the job that you did in that respect. And then the other issue Thomas said, I don't know if you addressed it, I didn't hear it in your presentation, was the bill dealing with sovereign immunity, because that one, too, will have a tremendous fiscal impact on the city if it passes. It increases, and Madam Attorney, I don't know if you in your office have had a chance to take a look at that bill. If so, you might want to.
Well, we've been following it. Certainly, what we see, especially if they are going to move toward giving some type of cover for businesses, we see it as a problem for us even more so.
Yeah, this is, and it's an increase in the amount of that aid.
Amount that they could file litigation.
Right, right, against the city, an increase in the amount of the sovereign immunity. So it, and it, you know, as Dr. Whitley mentioned, things move fast across the street. I've been there, I've seen it happen, and so we need to make sure that we're on top of this legislation. And if any of us, I think, have the opportunity to go over, I know the League of Cities has a Legislative Action Days coming up soon.
April 5th.
April 5th. But I think the more personal contact that they have, it's great to work through FMEA and the League of Cities, but that personal contact, I think in that committee meeting yesterday, it made a difference with those folk when the mayor was as briefed and prepared as he was and could answer the questions that they asked. And so it certainly, I think, would help, Dr. Whitley, if you would keep us abreast of how these bills are moving, and especially the ones that you've highlighted, and how we can personally be involved in the process. I think that will make a difference when all we have to do is walk across the street. I would certainly be willing to give of my time, because these are some very important issues and will have tremendous impacts on our city because of the amount of property that's not on the tax roll, and the fact that we want to maintain the low tax rate that we have on our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Very briefly, for those who may be listening, who may not know who our local delegation is, in the Senate, we have Senator Cory Simon, and in the House, we have Representative Gallup Franklin, and we also have Representative Allison Tent. Pray for them, reach out to them, engage with them, because 60 days, things go really, really fast, and sometimes they just don't have time to slow down to talk to us, but get with their aides. If we have concerns, contact their offices and let them know what we have issue with. Dr. Whitley, do you know the deadline for when a bill has to be heard or it won't be moving any further? I know that there's a deadline that.
There's a.
They filed 100, it was 130.
The House has a deadline for filing bills, the Senate does not. And in practice, you'd have to have a House and a Senate companion, but there are certainly ways that a bill could pass in one chamber and then go to the other in messages and be accepted that way, particularly when they're in conference toward the end of session, and a lot of things are being used as negotiating bargaining chips. So in practice, there's probably not really a deadline.
Well, the deadline for them to be heard, if they're not heard by a certain date, then they're not going to be heard, so.
There's not exactly a deadline. We tend, we watch these things, it's a bit like reading the tea leaves, and we're in the third week, right? We have 60 days, as you said. They seem to overall be behind a little bit this session. There have been 1,700 bills filed, and so sometimes they just run, the clock runs out, they don't have time to get everything done. But, you know, if a bill has been referred to a couple committees, they can remove those references to speed the process up, and so there's not a, not really a clear deadline, but the further we get in, and each week, you know, each time we have an opportunity to give an update, we gain more and more confidence about what the outcome of the session is going to look like. But it is a constantly moving target.
Having worked there before, the rumor has it that they don't run out of time because they unplug the clock.
Yeah. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, and Dr. Whitley are correct on this. There is a deadline, and I'm trying to remember myself when it is, because of the sheer volume of the legislation filed.
It's okay, we'll find out.
If it's not heard. But Dr. Whitley is also very correct in his assessment that there are other ways if your legislation is.
Mm-hmm.
The dean here can probably give us a couple of hour workshop on how that's done from his experience as well.
They get creative over there, let me tell you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, would you, a motion for acceptance of the report?
Some move.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes for zero with Commissioner Porter out of chambers. Thank you, Dr. Whitley. We are on item number 12.03, the noise ordinance. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an update on the urban core noise ordinance, just a little bit of background that you know, but for everyone's benefit. This time last year, you adopted a revised ordinance that applied outside the urban core. That's the majority of the city, and we were trying to address large gatherings, parking lot gatherings, and they were having an impact on neighboring residences. Those changes were led by TPD, giving us insight in terms of the tools that they would need to make a difference. They were very common sense tools and have worked very, very well. We provided you an update in the fall in terms of the effectiveness, and at that time there was a discussion to look at the urban core, and that's a very compact area near downtown, covering into the university areas. There's been a lot of dialogue and discussion with neighbors and interested parties. The stakeholders have grown to as many as 20 or more. Cynthia Barber, our deputy city manager, has led that staff discussion. We've worked with the city attorney's office to craft an ordinance potentially for your consideration, and you have language in your agenda item that identifies, it's narrowly crafted, to not be overly burdensome, but in an attempt to get to the issues that have been raised and the conversations that have been had. Essentially, what it does is it limits outdoor amplified sound originating from establishments serving alcohol between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM in an area, a newly defined area known as the central core. This would be a subset, if you will, of the urban core. The sound cannot be plainly audible from 200 feet from the establishment. That's the basic essence of that. We're seeking your direction. This would, if the commission wanted to proceed, would need to be codified in an ordinance, which would be introduced in a public hearing would be set. And so Cynthia Barber is here to answer any questions. She's the staff lead. Lou Norvell in the city attorney's office, city attorney, have been engaged. Lou knows more than any of us would like to know about this, and so I know they can provide input and answer questions that you might have.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, sir, we do. We have about 15 speakers.
Okay, shall we begin?
Our first speaker is Keith Ugerhide, be followed by Eric Mullins.
Excuse me, name and address for the record, please.
Keith Ugerhide, 600 West Gaines Street, Residence Inn by Marriott, and also the AC Hotel at the Capital Cascades. Today, I really just wanted to thank everybody for their leadership. I know everybody's been working very hard, working toward a common goal to try to bring this issue to a point where it could positively impact the quality of life for all the people who are living in, down, or near the urban core. There are a couple of caveats in the new draft, which were inserted after previous discussions and meetings, which make it a little challenging on different angles toward the, toward the, toward the, can't quite get it there. But the two key items that make it very difficult for us to agree toward this particular draft would be the overlay of the urban core and the central core, which does not really seem to make very much sense from the standpoint that the issues that are impacting the area that we're trying to address are in both areas. And the second is the serving of alcohol, which does not really make much sense from the standpoint of those who might be in residential areas that are surrounding the urban core area. Those are really the two main items that we were focused on, that we think would really have a positive impact, be able to pull this forward and have a better impact toward the quality of life that we would all like to see in the urban core downtown area. Again, thank you for your leadership, and I will turn it over to Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Is Eric Mullins, followed by Miguel Arcell.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Eric Mullins, 600 West Gaines Street, with the Residence Inn by Marriott. Thanks for having us. Thanks for taking all the time and effort, putting this all together. Totally in agreement with Keith, I don't know why we're targeting specifically alcoholic establishments. I know that I've seen some of these car parties where they are serving alcohol out of the trunk, and they are probably not licensed or established. But we've got three main problems. We've got the car stereos, we've got club speakers pointed at the building, and in other parts, we have the noisy neighbors that just won't turn it down. And we're not talking urban den, and we've explained all this, we've had these conversations. This is nothing new. So we need to get rid of this sale of alcohol. I have no idea where the central core is in the urban core in Tallahassee. Just really, that's really just scrambling this egg to the point where who knows what it is. And then, other than that, I would like to see somebody make a motion to remove these two things and go from there, see where we get. It's also odd that we've been talking with business owners and club owners and with the city, and we flattened it from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, when I think everybody involved, including the All Saints District, the Tallahassee Noise, Citizens Against Noise Pollution, and we've all been saying, push it later on the weekend, keep it lower on the weekdays when we're trying to sleep, push it later on the weekends when we don't have to wake up at 6:00, we don't have to work in the morning. So other than that, I'd like to see somebody remove a couple of these things and see where we go from there. And you guys can have the rest of my time. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Miguel Arcell, and then Andrew Zach.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Miguel Arcell. I accidentally put my parents' address on that form, so my correct address is 2738 West Arp Street. I come today to speak on that ordinance and opposition of it entirely. I grew up in a very small town. My family was actually in the bar industry, so I grew up around there, and my dad, he kind of showed me the ins and outs of the industry. I've seen firsthand the immense amount of revenue that could be generated from safe alcohol practices, of course, not just for the owner itself, but also for the employees. As we know, there's a very popular establishment downtown that employs an insane amount of college students, Florida State students, FAMU students, and Tallahassee Community College students. This is helping them get through college, pay for their food, pay for their different expenses that, of course, is getting associated and being raised each day through higher education. By limiting the ability of this establishment to operate in a safe and responsible way, you're not only impacting the owners, but you're also impacting the employees themselves. And on top of that, Florida State students are very well aware of the actions of this owner who has contributed in numerous philanthropy events for our students, and he has ensured that all practices are being done in a safe, responsible manner. And the previous speaker might have mentioned quality of life. We're not talking about the outer skirts of Tallahassee, which is mainly residential areas. We're talking about the urban core. Unfortunately, living in that area, you're going to be dealt with noise complaints. In my town, we have the famous 12 Hours of Sebring racetrack, and we have people who move in, for some reason, right next to the racetrack. And when they complain about noise complaints, it's just an assumed risk. So coming to Tallahassee, moving into the urban core, or staying at a hotel in the urban core, is just an urban risk. It's a assumed risk. There's nowhere in Tallahassee you're going to find complete silence, and I think expecting that, especially in the most populated and most busy areas of our city, I think is just an, it's not a straight thought process, in my opinion. Thank you for your time, and I hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Andrew Zach is next, followed by Stanley Sims.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Andrew Zach, and I'm a resident at 221 West Ridge Drive here in Tallahassee. First of all, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Andrew. I'm a sophomore at Florida State University. I'm in the university honors program, and I'm currently studying digital media production with a goal to go into the video industry, working for a major sports team, doing social media video content. And when I'm not filming stuff for class or for work, I'm working at Potbelly's, one of the establishments that would be affected by this policy, as a DJ. I'm an out-of-state student. I'm originally from Dallas, Texas, and fortunately, I was able to receive a very generous merit scholarship from the university, but unfortunately, that doesn't cover all of my tuition and expenses. So in order for me and my family to cover that out-of-pocket cost of tens of thousands of dollars for me to come to school here, I have to work. And fortunately, Potbelly's has given me an opportunity to earn money while also pursuing my passion of music and video and all that stuff. When I first got a job at Potbelly's, I was nervous, I was a little intimidated, a new environment, but as I worked there and worked hard and proved what I can do, I was accepted into the family that that place, all the employees have together. And yeah, all I got to say is just with this ordinance, it would severely impact not only the profitability of the business, but our ability as students and members of this community to, you know, pay for school and finance our future. So all I ask you is please, just as you consider this ordinance going forward, please consider the students who worked hard to even get here and who are continuing to work hard to get their degree and go on, and even just the members of the community who worked there as well, just to get by. And yeah, I just want to ask you to please also consider the community we've built. We all pour our time and effort into working here, and I just ask you to consider that, consider our sacrifice that we make, just as you make this decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Stanley Sims is next. He'll be followed by Albert Hanson.
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Stanley Sims at 1320 Avondale Way. In regards to the noise ordinance, I must say, the Tallahassee Police Department has put a lot of thought in this, and City Commissioner Curtis Richardson, controlling noise in a college town is not easy. Why can I say that? Because controlling rap music at 1320 Avondale. Because controlling rap music at 1320 Avondale with a 23-year-old mayor, that ain't easy. I keep having to say, turn that mess down. So I understand. I have even gone down there when Good Vibe Club was open. Because citizens told me, Commissioner Richardson, that police was using the noise as an excuse to unnecessary arrests. That's not true. Actually, Madam City Attorney, some arrests I thought they should have made, they didn't. I'm being fair here. Just being fair. And then when you build a hotel in a urban core next to FAMU and FSU, what do you expect? I would like to drop in here, maybe if you bring down them prices during football game, we could relax and go to sleep early. But you don't do that. Those prices are high during football season. The City Commissioner, I remember when my mom closed on our house in Silver Ridge, 1010 Silver Ridge. We had moved from Texas Street out of the project, where now we have a new subdivision going up. And we couldn't burn the air conditioner until 9:00. But the kitchen window was facing Florida A&amp;M, and when I would stand on the chair and wash dishes, I can hear, "Woo!" They're marching 100. That wasn't a nuisance to me. This is what you get in a college town. And unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, it is laid upon you all to bring some justice to this. But it's, it's, what is not at fault here is, is any mal. I just think we're just trying to find a reasonable way to accommodate college town. And when you guys do that, Madam, can you give a copy to my wife? Because I want to give a copy to my 23-year-old son, so he can turn that mess down.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Albert Hanson, will be followed by Dan Gilbertson.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Albert Hanson, and I live at 300 South DePaul Street, Unit 510, next door. So, let's see, I'll have a little talking points here. My name's Albert Hanson, and I represent Potbelly's alongside 240 active employees, who in turn represent the three local colleges and local community. Our venue brings everything from internationally renowned performers such as Shaquille O'Neal, Diplo, Steve Aoki to Tallahassee, as well as giving opportunities to local artists and small regional touring acts. Potbelly's has been even given birth to a legendary career such as Bear Kreischer or Jacob, and who continue to represent our community abroad. A recent Oxford study found that venues such as ours have a very large economic impact on the overall community. For every $100 spent at a concert on average, nets an additional $334.92 for other surrounding businesses and in turn, tax revenue that supports our great city. And that's before the fundraising that we do here. We support the North Florida Wildlife Center through fundraising on behalf of our mascot, Lunchbox the Pig. We yearly sponsor the Sisters of the Della Walker Chapter, who support the Juneteenth Awards, which honors local African-American leaders. We donate our venue to organizations from the local colleges to support their charities and help fundraise for a vast majority of nonprofit organizations that raise hundreds of thousands of dollars. For example, we have a live music charity event put on by military and first responder, responder veterans such as the Spear Project, whom gives opportunities to both of those individuals after their service comes to an end. They're throwing a live concert at Potbelly's with the Tobacco Road Band here in April to raise funds for that mission statement. It suggests you guys come out and have a good time. The original ordinance was drafted to support the development of the downtown district. Developers even constructed multimillion-dollar investments into our community, such as Onyx across from our venue, to build upon the local commerce that we have brought to the downtown district for over 25 years. The two restaurants across from us close their doors when we, when we are in between semesters, as, are heavily reduced their hours because of how important the foot traffic our venue generates to their profitability. Young entrepreneurs from the three local colleges have capitalized on their opportunities with us to begin, begin careers that stretch into their young adulthood here in Tallahassee. Changes to the noise ordinance will severely hurt, if not kill, all of these local impacts mentioned, and push these young entrepreneurs, who are important to our ever, ever-developing community, to one far from our doors of the city hall. And these are just the potential impacts to our venue, which is a fraction of the other local businesses, whom will suffer from changes to a code that created them in the first place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Dan Gilbertson, followed by Ricardo Bruski, or Brasky.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Dan Gilbertson, 459 West College Avenue, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'll try not to reiterate what a lot of people have said here, but I do have a little bit of a stakeholder here. It's, he says, over 25 years, Potbelly's, actually, it's almost 28, 29 years we're, we're going on. When it first opened, there was really nothing in the area. We're talking about a very small footprint of Tallahassee, from College Avenue to College Town. And a little bit of a history, some people may not realize that there was not a noise ordinance prior to the ordinance that, that went into place. So it wasn't that an ordinance was carved out from existing ordinance. What happened, to give you a little bit of a history, is there was a very extensive debate going back between the business community and the greater Tallahassee neighborhood associations. It was a much larger groups that were battling back and forth. We went over a year of different meetings and coming to a compromise. When we finally came to the commission, where both groups supported the ordinance. And the key aspects of those ordinance were, we wanted to create, to be able to fill a gap for downtown, where historically, people come and visit from out of town, they come for games, they come for legislative, they come, and this is where they come and entertain. We have a new area. Someone may come up and talk about Austin, Texas. They may talk about these other communities. We're not those communities. That was a key point in us discussing that. Look, in my business, where I live, you know, I have a fraternity house next door. I might have, I have a civic center a block down the street. We have a stadium in this area. It's a different area. We want, come in. So the idea was to create an area, says, here we have an area that will serve this particular service for our community by giving the rest of the community everywhere else, probably, I don't know the exact percentage-wise, but I think our footprint we're talking about is very insignificant compared to the greater Tallahassee, which let's give those areas. The idea was, we'll give you everything you want in those areas for sound, more than what they would have gotten had we kept battling. And that was what, how we came about this. And the idea was saying, over a long period of time, businesses will decide where they want to decide. People will decide where they want to live, where you want to stay at a hotel. You might want to be where you can go out and walk down by somebody. You're not going to please everybody. But I will tell you, look at the economics. More larger and bigger student housing are growing, occupancy rates are up, rentals are up, property values, taxes are in. It's working. It works. What are we trying to fix here? I'm afraid if we jump into something, you're going to create other issues. So that's just a general idea, but let me kind of tell you a little bit about the safety. Part of the live work in place, and that's not represented here, is, you know, we're not talking about, if you don't like, if you haven't been to college, or you haven't been probably to Potbelly's, then if you didn't go to school in one of the three universities, if you live outside of downtown, probably haven't been there, and if you don't like college students or particularly-
You have 15 seconds to wrap up.
15, so go.
15.
Okay, okay. Well, quickly, on the noise, I'd just say, let's not change something that, there's a few different problems with it. I think we need a little bit more time. There are some issues in it. Not saying there's things we can't do better as a community, but we need some more time to meet before we just jump in to pass them. So please give us some time for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Ricardo Brasky, and then Joseph Years.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Ricardo Brasky, 1940 Heritage Grove Circle. Basically, I just wanted to say it like this. Now, I don't work for any clubs, you get me? My mom finances my finances. But canceling, canceling the noise ordinance, to me, it's like, I've been hearing all you guys talk, you know, Mayor Pro, Diane, she was talking about safety. You know, at the end of the day, we're, we're trying to keep our kids safe, and I feel like canceling a noise ordinance is, is not going to keep doing that, because kids are going to be kids. College kids are going to be college kids. You get me? And when you try to contain a college kid, they're going to try to find a way out of it, and it's going to the clubs. Basically, what I'm saying is, when, for instance, if myself were to be contained, I'm going to find something else to do that's particularly not safer than going to a club where, for instance, Dan, he works for Potbelly's, and he employs a bunch of sober security people. You get me? I'd rather, I'd be safer, I'd feel safer if I'm drunk and I have someone that's watching over me that's sober enough to take care of me and make sure I don't do anything stupid, than to, you know, find something stupid to do, possibly mess up my future in whatever I want to do, and get drunk and make one simple mistake that can cost me my life. But at the end of the day, we were talking about safety. You were talking about keeping our kids safe. I feel like that's a safety thing. You get me? Curtis, I'm sorry, I just saw Curtis Richardson. You were here for 50 years, and within these 50 years, you've seen college kids grow up. You've seen personally, your kids possibly grow up. I don't know your, your family age, but that's how we say it. You get me? You've seen kids grow up and into the safety matter. So making this noise ordinance, as a fraternity kid, you get me, I am in a fraternity, I do know that there is going to be more repercussion than, than pros. I understand for businesses like these gentlemen right here, or they do need sleep, but like, like they were saying earlier, it comes with the cost. You live somewhere, you go, it's, I live in Miami Beach. If I didn't want noise, I'd go somewhere else. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Joseph Years, followed by Beau Simon.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Years, 1940 Heritage Grove Circle. Mayor Daley, Commissioners, I stand here today as a concerned citizen of Tallahassee, Florida. I have been guided my whole life to stand up for what's right for my community, my peers, and myself. I'm speaking to you today about the detrimental effects on the local economy and the community's safety the proposed ordinance will have on the urban core of the Tallahassee community. A weekday curfew of 11:00 p.m. threatens to destroy a vital economic aspect of the greater Tallahassee community. Those businesses that rely on amplified sound past 11:00 p.m. on the weekday might as well shut their doors as the operating costs deem it necessary to have their clubs open past 11:00 p.m. on weekdays. Many businesses and individuals rely on the income produced by patrons inducing themselves in entertainment past 11:00 p.m. Rideshare operators, restaurants, will witness a large decline in income as those same patrons will no longer attend clubs on weekdays. Additionally, as many employees at clubs are students, those same students may risk the inevitability of losing their job or having their hours slashed. As a student that is financially independent from my parents, I can attest that for those students to lose their job or to have their hours cut will negatively impact their livelihood and financial status. It is also simple to say that clubs and the adjacent businesses in the urban Tallahassee area stimulate the local government through a massive tax revenue. As clubs will be shut down, those students that wish to continue to party will do so underground in an unregulated environment. Clubs allow students to party in a safe environment managed by licensed bars and security. Enforcing a curfew will eliminate the option to club on a weekday, but it won't eliminate the desire of students to party on that same weekday. Those in favor of this bill would note, would note that the noise produced by the clubs in the urban core of Tallahassee is negatively impacting their businesses and way of life. Although this may be true to an extent, the harm of essentially destroying an entire industry of Tallahassee community and the potential safety concerns outweigh those noise concerns. Many of those who complain about the noise intentionally picked the College Town area as it is highly trafficked by students and families alike. Placing this detrimental noise curfew may have the opposite effect of what many businesses would expect. With the elimination of nightlife and adjacent businesses by the noise curfew, those same businesses may experience a similar, similar decline in business as fewer students and families will travel to the College Town area. Mayor and Commissioners, I ask that you vote no on this harmful bill. The consequences of voting will be, will produce unintended externalities that will negatively impact the Tallahassee community. I came here to convey the feelings of myself and my peers, and I'm, I'm here to tell you that no solution is easy, but this is not the right one. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Beau Simon. Beau Simon will be followed by Patrick Carney.
As our next speaker is coming, by the way, appreciate everybody coming out. I just want to make sure that we have clear understanding. The draft that's being proposed does not set a curfew. It is not shutting down any establishments, and it's not actually even shutting down music. It's just saying that at 11:00, the music needs to go inside and not be outdoor amplified. The concert can continue, it just has to go in until 2:00 in the morning when last called before the bars actually shut down. Now, I understand others might disagree with that, but I just want to make sure that we're clear that this is not shutting down the establishments. It's just at 11:00, as it's drafted and brought before us, that the music would be moved inside.
Hi, guys. My name is Beau. I live at 2195 West Tennessee Street. I'm a bartender at Potbelly's, and I'm also legislative aide in the Capitol. On top of all that, I'm a full-time student at Florida State, who's financially independent from my parents. I pay my own tuition, I pay my own rent, I do everything on my own. Potbelly's has given me that opportunity to do that. I understand with the ordinance, it brings the music inside, but with a venue like Potbelly's, we have a huge outdoor portion. If you guys haven't seen it yet, it is pretty big. And it would eliminate a lot of revenue-making for myself, for my colleagues at work, who really depend on that money, to further our education, to put a roof over our heads. Pots is not only revenue-making for ourselves, we're revenue-making for nearby businesses. There are restaurants, there are different, for example, like the hot dog stand on the corner. There are a bunch of places that rely on Potbelly's nightly attractions to generate revenue for themselves. So when we talk about these ordinances, you're talking about kind of decreasing the general revenue brought to the establishment, which is all taxable by you guys. So it's a win for everybody in a lot of ways. So really, I just beg of you, you know, let's help keep my job, my colleagues' jobs, the neighborhood surrounded by it. We live in a college town. Noise is going to be a problem whether you pass this or not, and it'll be a problem years from now, whether you guys are still on the dais or not. It doesn't make a difference. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Next is Patrick Carney, and then Melverson Wallers.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Carney, 302 Raven Street, The Tally Strip, Forefront Hospitality. Again, not going to repeat everything, just would like to reiterate what Dan said and give us some more time, possibly come to a better conclusion than 11:00, where music goes inside. There's a lot, we have over 150 employees as well, that could be affected in this. We have to cut music that, on our outdoor patio, because we're 200 feet, within 200 feet of another apartment complex. We would like to just not have it 11:00. That's a little too early for us. It'll be hurt our pocketbook quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Melverson Wallers, and then Gene Desire.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address, please.
How you doing today, Mayor? And of course, Commissioners. I'm thankful to have the opportunity to even speak, because I've never been in a room like this. Feel like I'm in courtroom, and it's a little different. I had a chance to see the other individuals that had come before me and speak on this issue. I'm also a business owner. I also teach as a professor at the university. And I speak on the behalf of the business owners that's in the community, that also with the stuff that's going on with COVID, outside door areas, that is needed to give space to other individuals that's in the community. But also, I think of the rule that you guys are trying to convey, as in the urban community, that's isolating individuals. And we need to probably revisit that. I don't know who it is that needs to revisit it, because this is my first time hearing about it. And when I hear about things that I, that I believe in, and I got to speak on it, I took time out from my job to come out here and to make sure that my voice is also heard. Everyone in this room believes in something. And I also think that every moment, I'm writing a book, that every moment that we live, right, is special. But that's the only thing that's perfect. You're taking away the opportunity from all the- You're taking away the opportunity from all these different individuals to see or experience the nightlife from a different perspective. Everyone don't see it inside. Some people are closed and want to see the outdoors. So we all, and I'm just speaking from my heart, we all want to be creative in the way that we do things. The noise ordinance would limit that creation, right? We won't be able to do things that we need to do effectively so that everyone could do what we want to do. Everyone in this community had done something outdoors and indoors, and know that the experience is different. Give these students and give the people in the community that comes to Tallahassee a different experience as well. I thank you for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Gene Desire, and then followed by Max Sherman.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, and appointed officials. My name is Gene Desire. I'm from 3274 Grand Mercy Place. And after hearing 14 people before me speaking, it sounds like I'm going to say a lot of stuff you already heard. So, in all in all, I'm also a local business owner, and I know how much that Pot Bellies affect my company and others. I'm an event planning and marketing owner. I own an event planning and marketing LLC. They deal with food vendors, clothing vendors, like someone said earlier, they have like food trucks and everything. So affecting that, the sound ordinance that's from 11:00 PM going inside, it affects a lot of, a lot of their revenues and their business as well because they're so used to, and the customers are used to, of like having to be able around Pot Bellies past 11:00 PM. Granted, you say you just want the sound to go inside, but sometimes, as I have concerts and different type of events, that won't be allowed to be inside. Like you can imagine for like spacing and, someone mentioned earlier, COVID-19, so you want to be nice, tight with everybody else. So again, not to repeat everyone else, that this sound ordinance they're trying to do from 11:00 PM to bring the sound inside will affect not only just Pot Bellies employees that employ many college students, but surrounding area businesses. And I don't want to waste your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Max Sherman, and then Haley Ammonson.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Max Sherman, I'm at 378 Hayden Road. Good afternoon, everybody. So to introduce myself, again, my name is Max. I'm a senior at Florida State University. I'm also an employee at Pot Bellies, working in the audio and visual production department. A lot of my colleagues have brought up a lot of good, you know, economic reasons and cultural reasons as to why we kind of disagree with this proposed ordinance, but this is extra personal for me for two main reasons. So I am in the Marine Corps Reserve and just got back from a deployment last May, which happened in the middle of my career at Florida State. All my friends graduated, came back knowing not a single person. The only person in Tallahassee I knew, who is my roommate, and the only reason I knew him is because I made him move here with me. We went on deployment together. Through the Veterans Organization at Florida State, met a lot of people that were involved with Pot Bellies and immediately got a whole culture, a whole group of friends, and a whole support system for us and like everybody else. With the Collegiate Veterans Association, we also, our goal is to find all the student veterans and give them the opportunity and the same support system and the same opportunities that we've had. And fortunately, Pot Bellies, not only through just normal nightlife, but also through the events and a lot of the, you know, philanthropy they've done that we've been beneficiaries of, that's been really important for us. So reason number one. Reason number two, unrelated to reason number one. So I'm about to graduate here from FSU. After that, I'm moving to Los Angeles to go to a pretty prestigious music production school. I did not music major at Florida State because the things I want to do in music are not offered. The only place in town where similar things are offered is the nightlife, through DJing, through music production, through, you know, live sound, audio engineering, all those kinds of things. Without the ability to hold these types of events that do end up going late into the night, I would have, I would be set back tremendously in what I want to do with my future. And I know there's a lot of other students at Florida State that have similar interests and have been able to explore those interests through Tallahassee nightlife. Pot Bellies specifically has brought out huge artists that I never, ever thought I would get to drive five minutes from my house to be able to go see in a safe environment that I trust and not, you know, emptying my entire wallet. So I would ask that, you know, again, we have a little more time to reconsider this and take all of these other considerations, aside from not just the economics, but also just the culture, Tallahassee culture, student opportunities, take all those things into consideration when we're talking about this. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. We appreciate it, sir. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Haley Ammonson. And, Mr. Mayor, the next speaker will be Patrick Rowe. That's the last speaker I have here in chambers. We do have one connected virtually.
Okay.
There are two more speakers. Never mind, you're right. Haley Ammonson, I live at 1415 St. Francis Street, and I represent the Citizen Committee on Noise Pollution and All Saints District Community Association. Enjoy Los Angeles, they have a noise ordinance there, so that'll be great. You can sleep at night. I did not, I do not need to inform the Commission again of how much of an issue the noise is downtown in the urban core. It's a serious problem due to the lack of regulation. The ordinance that is presented today would have been an improvement to the regulation of noise if it wasn't watered down with language that makes the noise issue unenforceable, if the establishment is making loud noise, does not sell alcohol, or if they are in the urban core, but not in the central core, in which case, nothing changes about the noise or, oh, noise regulation. I am here today to urge you to make a motion that removes the language sale of alcoholic beverages and zone central core so that we can create a noise ordinance that is effective, fair, and beneficial for our business and residential community. Living in a walkable area can increase your home prices by over $20,000, according to the Urban Land Institute. So that's pretty significant. Firstly, by removing the language sale of alcoholic beverages, we can ensure that all people, not just bars, are held accountable for their noise levels. This will create a level playing field and prevent any establishment or residents from skirting the rules. By holding everyone to the same standard, we can create a better environment for both residents and visitors alike. Secondly, removing the language zoned central core is essential if we want to create a fair and equitable noise ordinance that benefits all businesses and residents in our community. As it stands, the central core unfairly targets specific parts of the central, of the urban core, and leaves the rest of us out. By removing this language, we can create an environment that polices noise and the same in all places, because noise doesn't care about an imaginary line. Noise is noise, and the regulation of it should be simple and easy to understand what rules apply to who and where. It also does not protect a lot of people in the urban core that are not in the central core. This keeps it at a 2:00 AM noise ordinance, and that is just not acceptable to the Citizen Committee on Noise Pollution. A year ago, this commission decided to accept the city staff's recommendation to change the noise ordinance, and it resulted in a lack of enforcement of noise disturbances downtown. That is why we are still here trying to change the noise ordinance. So let's get it right this time. I would like to remind everyone who is not here on December 7th that there was unanimous motion for the Citizen Committee on Noise Pollution to direct city staff. However, city staff did not incorporate the feedback from this iteration in the draft ordinance presented today regarding those two elements. We had two meetings concerning two completely different draft ordinances than the one that's presented today.
You're right, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. One point of clarification, though, I want to make sure that we're clear. There was never a motion that was made, it never has been a motion made, for a citizen committee to dictate to city staff exactly what will be presented. The motion was obviously for the staff to work with all the interested parties to be able to bring something forward. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Patrick Rowe.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dr. Patrick Rowe. I live at 215 West College. And I just wanted to point out that I think with the ordinance, we're not asking for anything that's extreme. And you, Mr. Mayor, kind of beat me to the draw when you said that it's not a situation where the whole area is shut down or anything like that. It's just asking that at a reasonable time, the noise is reduced and take the noise inside, you know, go all night if you want to. Nobody's trying to drive businesses out of the area. A number of the people who spoke actually are owners or managers of businesses in the area. So I think it's just a few people who want to have endless noise in, in the downtown area, where we're just after something reasonable so people can enjoy the downtown, but the residents of downtown can sleep as well. I was a teacher for 37 years, and I've taught at different colleges and universities. And everywhere but in this area, it seems like there's no, there's a reasonable arrangement with noise. So we're not anti-business. We want businesses to thrive. We just want people to be able to sleep at night after a reasonable time. So I'm for the ordinance. As far as delaying things, we've been having meetings and talking about this for a long time now. So I think the idea of just dragging it out so things might, might die is not a good idea. We've gone through different drafts of the ordinance. We have one now. Maybe it needs to be tweaked a little bit, that's for sure, but I think it's a, it's a reasonable thing. So, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
That was the last speaker here in chambers. We do have Blake Sandler via WebEx. Correct.
Yeah, can you, can you hear me?
We sure can. Your name and address for the record, please, and the clerk.
All right.
Would you have 30 seconds left?
All right, all right, guys. My name is Blake Sandler. I live at 415 St. Francis Street and represent the Citizen Committee on Noise Pollution, the HOA Board, the Coasters of All Saints, and the All Saints District Community Association. I also want to address some of the other comments today. We are not trying to control a certain type of music or shut down businesses. We just want sleep. There are a lot of clubs, bars, and music venues in Tallahassee. It just seems that there's only one that can be heard from over eight blocks away, and we just want to be good neighbors. I don't know any other locations that are as loud. We are also not even saying that clubs need to close, just take it inside or keep the music at a reasonable level so that we are not keeping people up, because we just want to have, you know, good manners. As we all know, the noise issue in the urban core has been a serious problem due to the lack of regulation. The draft noise ordinance that is presented today is so close to being an improvement to the regulation of noise, but unfortunately, it has been weakened with language that makes the noise issue unenforceable, if the establishment making loud noise does not sell alcohol or if they're in the urban core, but not the central core. And I find this to be unacceptable as it does not address pop-up parties, house parties, and most locations in the urban core. That is why I am speaking today, to urge you to consider the proposed changes to the noise ordinance that remove the language sale of alcoholic beverages and zone central core so we can create a noise ordinance that is effective, fair, and beneficial for our community. With these changes to the draft ordinance proposed today, we would have an 11:00 PM cutoff for outdoor amplified noise in the urban core. This would actually make a serious difference and hold those accountable for disturbing the quiet enjoyment of our homes. The Citizen Committee on Noise Pollution was supposed to help direct city staff on writing the noise ordinance, and we had two meetings, but we did not get a chance to do that for this draft. The last meeting we had with city staff was on January 30th, and the additions concerning sale of alcoholic beverages were never mentioned at the meeting. Additionally, the central core criteria actually hurts us here because while I live in the All Saints neighborhood, which is not zoned for central core, I'm unfortunately, it's still in the urban core, which means my noise cutoff time would still be 2:00 AM. So the problem is not solved with this new draft, which is why I am urging the Commission to show leadership and change the draft so that the Coasters of All Saints community and a lot of other communities in the urban core, which are counting on your representation, to help them get some sleep at night. Lastly, but perhaps most importantly, these changes will benefit all residents in our community by allowing everyone a reasonable time to sleep. Noise is a pervasive issue in our community and affects the health and well-being of all residents. And by creating a comprehensive noise ordinance, we can ensure that everyone is held accountable for their noise levels, that everyone has a right to a good night's sleep. That is why, on behalf of the Citizen Committee on Noise Pollution, the residents of the Coasters of All Saints and the All Saints District Community Association, I urge the City Commission to make a motion to remove the language sale of alcoholic beverages and zone central core from the second page of the draft noise ordinance. And then let's vote this thing in. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Mayor, I have no other speakers on this item.
All right, let's open it up for discussion.
Question, Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson.
I'm curious to know if, if, if the, the Committee on Noise Pollution was not involved in this most recent draft, and they seem to be opposed to the language that includes selling of alcoholic beverages and the central core. I, I'm just curious to know why that staff include that in this most recent draft.
Absolutely. Mr. Manager.
I think we may.
Mr. Barber.
Mr. Mayor, we may need to tag team it a little bit. I'll ask Cynthia to come forward. We, I think the basic, the foundation of it, Commissioner, is there was a lot of input gathered and a lot of interested parties, and I think it's a meshing of that. We worked with the city attorney's office as well, kind of with an objective of what to achieve, and I think that's the basic answer. Cynthia probably can, can help me go a little deeper in terms of the feedback that we got and what we were trying to, to get to as we gave you something to consider.
Mr. Manager, you stated exactly correctly. This is, this ordinance, last ordinance, and every ordinance we've presented reflects input not only from the Citizens Committee on Noise Pollution, but other parties. So what we've tried to do is bring together the feedback that we've heard from all of the interested parties. And these conversations actually started with a group that was concerned about noise in the Thorpe Street area, and we've had quite a bit of success by working through that issue. And I know I can't talk about the details of mediation, I don't believe I can, but we've been able to reach mediation where there was a particular area of concern with that business owner. But I think there's some confusion that, by the committee, that this should reflect simply what the feedback we've received from them.
Right.
It's the feedback we receive from all of the participating and interested parties.
And just to follow up.
Sure. Commissioner Richardson.
So what, what, what were, what was the, the intent of the language dealing with the sale of alcoholic beverages?
Commissioner, I think I can address that, and certainly with the help of the police department. What we tried to do is really attack or look at the areas that had been of greatest concern to the citizens, including the Citizen Committee, and we were trying to take the approach that we have historically taken regarding noise, and that is, we take a somewhat of a piecemeal approach in the sense that we're trying to deal with issues as they arise, and we're incrementally dealing with and trying to find solutions. If this does not end up providing the, the solution significantly, that we expect, we can always come back and revisit it, amend it, and do whatever we can to address, keeping in mind that there are, there are a lot of constituencies involved in an effort to come to a common solution.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for everyone who provided input on, on this item today. I know, I know we've had this discussion for, for quite some time, in some aspects, for, for years of trying to come to terms with whether we were using decibel meters or, or other standards. And we're looking at language today that proposes unreasonably loud, raucous, or jarring. I mean, I think the overarching theme of all of this is to try to be good neighbors. It doesn't mean shut down every party that's going on, and it also doesn't mean keeping your neighbor awake to unreasonable levels of, of sound out as well. So I recognize that's a very difficult needle to thread, and, and a lot of conversations have been ongoing. With that said, there are, and what's proposed today, I think both hotels and bars have mentioned they thought, especially on the weekends, 11:00 PM was too early. I would support that going to at least midnight, and I think there was common ground to, to see that relatively from, from both parties. And secondly, also the sale of alcohol, I don't think we should be penalizing our businesses when we're not enforcing the same standard. If we're going to tell people they can't be loud outside of someplace that's in business, you shouldn't be able to walk across the street to somebody who's not in business and conduct the same type of noise level. And that, to me, incentivizes people to leave the businesses, and, and I don't support particularly that language. I would be happy to edit or, or edit both of those tonight. I would be happy to edit or edit both of those tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Excellent. So I'm going to jump in. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out, especially the students. Each one of you came out and said you're a student and you're working your way through school. I was a student, and I waited tables all the way through school, and I think it's extremely admirable to see you taking on the responsibility of working, sometimes working till 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning and attending school on top of everything else. One of you gentlemen testified that you are bartending and working in the legislature and going to school. Wow, that's impressive. Keep up the good work. I have known Dan Gilbertson ever since I was at Florida State University and the doors of Potbelly's opened. Matter of fact, I think I was one of the first people you met, Dan, back in the day. I know, Curtis, my mother's watching this commission meeting on television.
Here's their video.
Let me tell you something. I spent a lot of time at Potbelly's. I did. Let's see here. I saw Modern English. I saw The Groove Merchants. I saw Driving and Crying. I saw Otis Day in the Nights.
Whoa.
Along with many other concerts at Potbelly's, and I had a great time. The difference is all those concerts were inside, Dan.
Yeah.
It was back when Potbelly's, everything was inside. You had the front porch, but the concerts and everything didn't take place until 2:00 in the morning outside. Now, times change, and I get that. And also, I know that your physical footprint has expanded as well. It is not the same Potbelly's as it was 30 years ago, 25 years ago, when I was in school, and I get that. But I think we've got to strike a business. I want to be very clear. I won't support anything that actually shuts down Tallahassee nightlife at 11:00 at night. Hands down, no questions asked. I can't be there. We're a college town. We really are. However, I can support a measure that during the week shuts down at 11:00 and does, I agree with you, Commissioner Matlow, on weekends. That was what was agreed upon to go till midnight, and again, we are a college town. But I do think that it's reasonable to expect everybody to take their loud, amplified, whether it's a concert or a show of some type or whatnot, just take it inside. We're not saying don't have it. Take it inside. I rocked out at Potbelly's till 2:00 in the morning when I was your age. You can do the same thing. Just take it inside. When it comes to the sale of alcohol versus the non-sale, I'm extremely hesitant to remove the language, and I'll tell you why. We're a college town, and we've got fraternities, and we have sororities, and we have other organizations on campus that might be holding a house party. It is my understanding that they are actually governed under the Code of Conduct at Florida State through the FSUPD. I don't know if we have gotten into the fray of discussing what's the nexus, you know, between Florida State, FSUPD, the Code of Conduct, the code of how they actually regulate themselves, and I am hesitant tonight to move forward with removing the language of the sale of alcohol versus the non-sale of alcohol specifically for our student groups. And again, we're a college town, and they're going to be out and about. So I'm fine with the central core. I'm fine with the amendment of the hours, 11:00 during the day, midnight during the weekend. I don't think that's unreasonable. Many other communities and many other college communities across the country have similar noise ordinances, just saying, take it inside. You don't have to shut it down. To my friends at the hotel, I stayed at one of your sister properties in downtown Orlando about two and a half weeks ago, and it was interesting, and I'm sure you do this already, but it was a block off of Church Street. You probably know which one I'm talking about. And I got to my room, and there was actually a sign in there with three individual earplugs that says, hey, just want to remind you, you're staying in the downtown urban core, and your noise level's going to be a little different than other parts of Orlando. We want to be good neighbors as well. If you need the earplugs, here they are at your advantage. Again, I'm sure you do this as well in Tallahassee, but I think we should continuously, on all aspects, work to be good neighbors and remember that we are in a college town moving forward. To the residents, I agree, sleep is important, and I do agree with an 11:00 PM and a midnight on the weekends, but you also have to remember you live in the urban core next to college, 70,000 college students and bars that help make up Tallahassee. I need everybody to come to the table and be responsible and work well with each other on this. I'm also going to end my comments. Again, so Commissioner Matlow, what you brought up that I guess we're working off of, yeah, I could support 11:00 during the week, I can support midnight, and I can support the central core. I'm not ready to take the language out and would not be able to support the sale of alcohol provision that's in there. And I say, let's move forward today, and if it addresses the issue, that's great. If it doesn't, we'll come back to the table, and we go from there. My bar owners and operators, my managers, my bartenders, on a separate note, I'm asking personally for your help to clean up College Avenue. I'm sick and tired of all the cups, of all the wristbands of 21-Up strewn all over the streets. I've been working with the fraternities and the other organizations up and down college, the legislature's in town. Let's keep Tallahassee pristine, but I don't want to go out at 8:00 in the morning after a big show and see the streets of Tallahassee completely trashed. I'm asking for you to work with us. I'm asking for your establishments to clean up after yourself after a night of operation, and I don't think I'm being unreasonable with that request at all. So in closing, Commissioner Matlow, again, 11:00 during the week is great, midnight on the weekends, keep central core. I would like to go with that, and let's see what happens, and we could readdress, but we'll open it up for discussion. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see that Deputy Chief Holmes has come to the front. I'd like to hear if there's something he'd like to say or add to what was going on here since he's been one of the ones that's kind of been enforcing this from happening, so I'd like to hear from the expert.
Deputy Chief Holmes, on that point too, it was mentioned about the loud cars and everything as well. Could you also touch on the new state law that just was implemented and how that also assists us on the local level, specifically with the vehicles and the pop-ups, along with the work that we've already been able to do?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor City Manager, Commissioner. That law will go into effect, enforceable effect, tomorrow, tonight at midnight, pretty much, 23rd, and it's going to be state law 316-3045. And that, simply put, is loud music coming from a vehicle. That vehicle can be stationary, it can be parked in the parking lot, it can be parked at a house, it can be moving. It gives officers probable cause to stop that vehicle and have discretion if they want to cite that individual. Now, I honestly believe that that will help us tremendously with a lot of the complaints that we're currently having in the urban core because a lot of the noise that we're having, noise complaints that we're having, is just not coming from a nightclub, but it's coming from a lot of vehicles with some extremely loud, high-volume speaker systems. So this is another tool that we'll have to address this issue, and I believe in, you know, just like we did our noise ordinance, six months, we came back with a presentation to show its effectiveness. I believe we'll be able to show effectiveness with this new state law being properly enforced by our officers. And that's every agency, law enforcement agency in the state, not just the Tallahassee Police Department, but also Leon County Sheriff's Office, Florida Andin Police Department, Florida State Police Department, Florida Highway Patrol, everyone that's not a Tallahassee ordinance or law. It is a state of Florida law. As far as our noise ordinance, it's doing what it's created to do with the addressing of the pop-up parties and those vehicles and individuals at businesses playing music extremely loud. The officers are addressing it. They had to aggressively address it this past weekend, as a matter of fact, and one of the problem areas we have on West Tennessee Street. So it's doing what it needs to do. As far as the urban core, we've met with everyone. We've gotten complaints from both sides, and no one could come to a happy medium. So this is why the attorney's office came up with the language they did for that ordinance to address the issue. So we're just here to move at the direction of the commission.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. I know that you all have been out there, and I know that Deputy City Manager Barber has been called to the scene late at night, and she's gone to the scene in many cases to witness for herself. So not only has she and her staff spent a lot of time meeting with our constituents, she's actually gone out there at the request of residents to hear and see firsthand. So what she has brought to, she and the city attorney, what they've brought to the table is, like she said, it's a cake, and it's all the ingredients that we know of, that we have available, that we know of, to try to take us to the next level. We did the first step. This is now the next step, to see where this takes us and see if this will take care of the issue. We walk a delicate balance, too, because we're advertising an 18-hour downtown with what we're trying to get to. So I think we have to be very careful in how we do what we do because if indeed our goal is to have an 18-hour downtown, it's going to require some changes. It's going to require some, as I said to the gentleman earlier, we got a good problem. We're growing.
Right.
And as we grow, we've got to figure out how to accommodate this growth and how to have that entertainment district and how to have the residential district, and sometimes when they come together, we've got to figure it out. So I've just stated what we already know. We've got to figure it out, and the only way that I know to figure it out is to take a step at a time. And we've taken the first giant step, and now we have a state law, and now the next step is to carve out what we can to see if this will work. And then if there still is an issue, then we'll have to look at another step. But I think that, I know that, you know, folks have said, we've had a lot of meetings. Well, to me, that's a great thing. That's the investment that we've put in to try to hear you and to try to understand what it is that you're saying that you want to have happen. But you got to know that everybody don't want the same thing, and we have different sides, and we've got to try to find that happy medium, find that sweet spot. And so that's what we've been trying to do, and it's taken a few meetings to try to get there, and it's taken us a lot of patience, too, to get there. I understand that. So thank you all. Deputy Chief, thank you. Deputy City Manager Barber, thank you. City Manager, thank you. City Attorney, and everybody who has done, and the citizens who've done something to try to help us grow in a positive direction according to our noise ordinance. Thank you.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you remind me, where are we exactly with this? I mean, we haven't made a motion.
No. There's nothing on the table at the moment.
Okay. Well, you know, I agree with what's been said by others. I think I also would be, would support removing the language, restricting the enforcement, but I think I'm willing, I'm ready to move forward with where we are as well because I don't want to delay anymore, and so I don't know what others are feeling or if we're ready to make a motion, but that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson.
I would move staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor, on option one.
And I would second that.
Okay, there is a motion for the proposed draft. Option one is actually just commission discussion. So there's a motion on the proposed draft on the table, seconded by the Mayor Protem. As a courtesy, again, Commissioner Matlow, I'm with you. The language currently says 11:00 during the weekdays and then midnight on the weekends. Would you like to propose a motion to amend that, to change the hours?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, and I recognize we're all working together, and I think that's a fair compromise, so I'd make a motion to amend the motion to include midnight operating hours on the weekends.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, excellent. So now the motion as amended is the proposed draft that then creates the hours of 11:00 on the weekdays and then midnight on the weekends.
Yeah.
And then you have to, I'm sorry.
May I ask a question? Do you intend that to mean Friday and Saturday for the weekend?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that is what's currently on the table for discussion. Mayor Protem.
So for clarification, Sunday through Thursday, 11:00.
Right.
Friday, Saturday, midnight.
Right. Got it.
And Friday, Saturday at midnight, just take it inside.
Yeah. Go inside.
No curfew.
Okay. Any other comment, discussion? Okay, the motion, the amended motion, excuse me, yeah, the amended motion on the table was properly made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Protem. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that passes 5-0. I want to thank everybody for coming out today on that particular item. We are now on item 12.04. I am going to keep moving forward. We have five public comment speakers on the next item, and we have time before the public hearing to take this up. So 12.04, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll be brief. We'll move along. This seeks your approval of the collective bargaining agreements with our PBA, which represent our police officers. I'm pleased to present these agreements that were agreed upon by the negotiating teams, that management that was led by myself and our PBA team. I'd like to take just a moment, well, let me say this. These agreements were passed earlier this week by the bargaining units. That's made up, one bargaining unit's made up of lieutenants and sergeants.
Yeah.
They passed it at 95%. The other unit's made up of officers, investigators, that's a larger group, they passed it at 85%. I will tell you, historically, those are very, very high numbers, and I think it's indicative of the strength of the contracts that we were able to agree to. Now, I will tell you that Mr. Murphy, I will give him a ton of credit. He's our president of the PBA. He did a great job. I think we negotiated this in good faith. He didn't get everything he wanted, and he may be a little bigger than me, and we tried to arm wrestle, but we didn't use that as the measure of success. But it was a good back and forth, and there were a lot of hours, and I'd like to recognize him for his leadership. Calvin Beedenbaugh, he's lieutenant, I'd like to recognize him. There were a couple other gentlemen that aren't here today that I'd like to recognize too that were at the table, Justin Turner and Brian Giddens. They were there too, representing the PBA, and I thought they all did a good job. As happened in your executive session, what I would like to do, Mr. Mayor, very briefly, Mike Matternmore of Allen Norton &amp; Blue, he was counsel that was with us during the course in negotiation. As you know, Mike is a leading expert in the state. He does this. He sits on both sides. He may not be the favorite of all people in some things, but he does a great job, and he's certainly an expert in this field, and we appreciate his service. I'd like to have him just give a little background for everybody's benefit, what we see around the state, the pressure we see in these agreements around the state, our approach, and what the outcome is. And let me say this, you know this, but I want to repeat it. The central focus was around wages because that's the pressure point for law enforcement agencies everywhere in the United States, the ability to recruit and retain. And the central feature was raising the starting salaries of our officers to $60,000, which today they're about $50,000, so you can see that stair step change. And that impacted everything along that wage scale, and so that became the focal point. And it was a tough negotiation, but we did it, and I thought it went well. So, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Mike, just to give us a brief synopsis, and we seek your approval of ratifying these agreements.
Thank you, members of the commission. What we have, I'm pleased to present two full three-year collective bargaining agreements for your consideration and ratification. These are good contracts. They were reached quickly with just four sessions because the parties focused. I give a lot of credit to our friends at the Police Benevolent Association, who really focused on what was important and allowed the rest of the contract that's working to continue. So I'll give you an example for the sergeants and lieutenants. 27 articles were agreed to as status quo. That means what we've been living under for the last three years, and it's been working, continues without tweaking. Six were updated just by dates, so there were only five articles that we touched. And even with those five, some of them were just minor changes, like with relieve, we changed leave accrual from minutes to hours, which makes sense. But as the manager said, what we did focus on was wages. And this is not unusual. I'm seeing this in 2023 across the entire state, that employer organizations are coming to the table and resolving collective bargaining in a new way. They do it in a couple of sessions. They get right to the point, and in this instance, it's wages. And we have a significant improvement on wages that's reflected in the Appendix A of both of these collective bargaining agreements. I won't go into any more detail than that. I could, but except to say, these are by and large the contracts that have been working with improvements made in wages that will help us to recruit, retain, pay in a competitive way. way the police officers that we have in this city. And I'll just say one more thing before I sit down. What I've seen in 2023 are significant increases in the pay of law enforcement, both in this city, with the state law enforcement officers, and with the Capitol Police. We've seen contracts reached since January 1st, 2023, in the 20 percentile increases, between 20 and 30%. So the competition is receiving these kinds of increases. And with that, I'll take questions or pass it along.
Mike, would you mind, and I know I asked you to be brief, if you'll just kind of hit the highlights of what's in the contract? It's a three-year contract. I think that's daily, and it differs for years one, two, and three. I think that'd be helpful for everybody.
Okay, great. Like, for example, for the officers, 26 articles were agreed to as status quo. Four, which is agreement allowances, promotional examination duration, just that date changes. They just were updated to the 23, 26 timeframe. In Article Six, for hours, we changed the accrual rate, not the amount that you accrue, but the description of the accrual from minutes to hours, because minutes doesn't really make a lot of sense. For holidays, we just updated the holidays to reflect current practice. On Article Eight, for personal leave, again, we meant went from minutes to hours. Article 11 is the salary article, the appendix one, that we talked about, which increases starting salary from about 48.9 to 60, and cascades it up so that there's not compression. And that's at appendix A. Article 14, physical fitness, we clarified what is required in swimming, biking, and rowing. In Article 15, we moved the delivery of the manual from paper format to an electronic format. That's all we did. In Article 25, we clarified what happens when one gets into an accident. And that's it. That's all that we did. So the main lifting was wages. And like the manager said, that contract that I just reviewed was ratified with an 85% approval rating by the members of this bargaining.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Temp's hooking you up, Mike, with some water.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And Mr. Mayor.
Hey, we can even give Richard a cup if he wants one, too, I guess, you know?
So what you've heard is, if you would have heard this in years past, it would have been longer than your arm in terms of changes. So it was very straightforward. And I mentioned that the salaries were increased in year one. It was a different approach. Normally, it's a percentage change. This year, it was a dollars change, and it doubled compression. It starts the salaries at $60,000. In years two and three of the contract, it resumes a more normal format, which is somewhere around, I'm looking at my screen, somewhere around 3.9 to 4.2% increase for those succeeding years, which is very typical. And so the most change you see is in that year one compensation, and everything else pretty much stayed static.
Right, right. There's no step advancement in 23, 24.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarity.
Excellent. Okay, why don't we go to, how many public speakers do we have? We have, we have six, Mayor. We had five and one online. The one online is here, so everybody's here in chambers, six speakers. Excellent. Why don't we go here and hear from the public, and then we'll have our questions and discussion? Our first speaker, please.
Rudy Ferguson. Rudy Ferguson, and followed by Stanley Sims.
Pastor Ferguson, good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, good evening, rather. Pastor Rudy Ferguson, 1200 Harlem Street. I don't come often to talk, but I came today because I wanted to stand in support of Tallahassee Police Department and PBA. I've had the privilege of working along with our law enforcement, and I can say from my younger years, that wasn't always the case. Didn't like the police department, because the police department at one point didn't like me, or people that looked like me. But I've had the privilege in these last years of being the chairman of the council, working along with our chief and majors and deputy chiefs. And I've seen the improvements and great strides that they have, they have really garnered to do in our community, especially in the Griffin Lake neighborhood, along with our other vulnerable communities. And I have to say that, when I read this, I kind of watch you all on the screen, on the internet. And so I am standing in support of everything that they have been doing and working. And when I heard about the pay increase, some of us who are not law enforcers cannot understand the gravity and the weight that's on their shoulders every day, the responsibilities. The goal is for their family, their wives and children, is for them to make it home at night. Our goal as citizens to ensure that they're responsible, their jobs are carried through as much as possible. And to come in to be a law enforcement agent at $50,000, that is a lot of weight to carry. It's not a lot of money, but it's a lot of weight to carry on their shoulders. So I stand in support. It's along with the frontline pastors, Action Council, we have saw this, and we support it. And we support our women and men who are in uniform, who have to put on the badge and carry the gun with the hope of not having to use any of that in situations. But in our time, in my time as the chairman and former chairman, I've had the esteemed privilege of working along with them and continue to work along with them as they continue to do the such a great job they have done. So I could have sat over there and said wave of support, but I wanted to come up and say that I hope this body and that agreement that stays in place, and that our law enforcement understands that we love them and we're supporting them, and we hope that they continue to do the very job that they have been assigned to do. So with that, I say thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, and all of our commissioners and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Stanley Sims, and then Michael McLoughlin.
All right. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stanley Sims, still at 1320 Avondale Way, outside of the city, but afraid of Tallahassee Police. Unlike the previous speaker, Pastor Ferguson, I'm quite aware of your name. Now, if that was me, I would be cited and thrown out of the city. Oh. We live in a time where it's not what's right, it's who's right. But an officer with the Tallahassee Police Department didn't call Pastor Ferguson, he called me last week. And he is disappointed that a member of the tag team who was tested positive for drugs is still working for us in this environment where tag teams are attacking people who look like me and Pastor Ferguson. This officer, and he's also upset that I keep saying officer when he's a sergeant. And he tells me it's more to come. And I'm imagining, because he's probably watching, when our city manager says this is a new approach, well, why didn't somebody come up here and say, hey, we're changing our drug policy so that if you test positive, you have a chance not to get fired like the other 21 other officers? Oh, and why didn't our HR director, not our current one, the one that was terminated? Why she didn't know? Oh, why didn't our city manager, our attorney, did not know? Because our city manager knows how to route things in a way to get what he wants. The chief, thank you for having the IA officers to fall back off of me when I come to this meeting. I can literally now go to the bathroom and not be harassed and intimidated. I want our officers to make $60,000 a year. I appreciate every officer I see, but I want a clean one. I want one with integrity. I want one I can trust. And I'm not against the police. I'm against side management of the police.
You're at three minutes.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Michael McLoughlin, and then Harry Brown.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Michael McLoughlin. I'm at 100 Cade Street, and I'm a member of the Tallahassee Community Action Committee. And we are opposed to the fact that this PBA contract includes granting the police chief discretion over firing or not firing officers who test positive for controlled substances. Our issue is not with drug use among city employees, but rather with giving law enforcement officers preferential treatment when it comes to the accountability for their actions. As you have heard me and others wearing the Tallahassee Community Action Committee t-shirts, we've spoken repeatedly about the need for greater accountability of police officers here in Tallahassee, and this proposed contract fails to advance or in any way support police accountability here in Tallahassee. The fact that this contract has generated the amount of local media attention that it has points to the fact that not all is well in city government. If things were working well, this contract would have been a non-issue, as it has been in past years, if I remember right. But what we have seen very clearly over the last few weeks is that various people, you know who you are, within the city government, elected and appointed, do not agree about this contract, nor with the way it has been brought up to this meeting. Most importantly, you have made it clear that you, as city leaders, disagree about whether or not the city should hold police officers accountable to the same standards as other city employees. What we can see here is that Code, city manager Code, as an unelected official, manages and runs a whole lot of the show, and that when someone opposes him or his friend, police chief Revel, then they're summarily dismissed or fired. The fund of this contract appears to be rushed, that not everyone on the dais today has the information they need to be ready to move forward with this contract, and so I urge you not to go forward with it today. As I've said before, and will continue to say, as long as I have three minutes at city commission meetings, we need community control of the police here. This continued public conversation and controversy, whatever you want to call it, around drug use among the police here in town points to the need for a civilian police accountability council, a democratically elected body that would have direct oversight over the police in town, and so that we are not working through this tortuous chain of command that goes through appointed officials such as Reese Code. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Harry Brown. Mr. Brown's followed by Barney Bishop.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
I am Harry Brown. I reside at 5431 Crump Road. I'm here to share with you why the city of Tallahassee government is in shambles. There are too many races and bigots in the wrong positions in city government, starting with Reese Gold. Let me say that again, with Reese Gold, who should be long gone from city hall. Look at his history. Firstly, he mishandled the hiring of Chief Revel. When the black police officer came up from St. Petersburg to assume the position of chief of Tallahassee Police, he was discouraged by the racist tactics of Reese Gold. That is when hiring chief, a chief should have entertained new interviewees. Reese Gold took it upon himself to place his friend Revel in the position of chief. Everyone stood by and let this happen. Revel was a police officer who had shot a young black teenager in the head claiming to attempt to arrest Little Nuke. That was the young man's name. You are not attempting to arrest a young black by shooting him in the head. Everyone knows that you are attempting to murder him. Revel has never been charged with Little Nuke's murder. When it was announced that Revel was made chief, local black clergy could be seen hugging him on local TV as their approval of Revel's assignment. That assignment was wrong by Reese Gold. Revel is not capable of the position of police chief. That is obvious by what we are seeing now in the police department. The mayor is condoning and defending his action. Now, Reese Gold has fired the HR director. That is so wrong. Gold has too much wrong discretionary power, and no one is doing anything about it.
You're at 30 seconds.
Ms. Blair should be placed back in her position as soon as possible. I was fired and it took $31,000 from me, and Anita Favors said she could do what she wants to me because she had discretion. That is so wrong. I tell you, Bette Miller says it best, God is watching us. Mavis Staple also says it well.
You're at three minutes.
When the Lord gets ready, you got to go.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Barney Bishop, followed by Will Crowley.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Barney Bishop, 1454 Vuquere Drive, Tallahassee. I'm here representing Florida Smart Justice Alliance. I've been here on occasion to talk with you. I'm here to support the PBA and their contract. There's been a lot of extraneous issues brought up today. Whether you like the city manager or not, that's got nothing to do with the PBA contract. And the former HR director doesn't have anything to do with the PBA contract either. Let's talk about the men and women who represent that thin but very important blue line, that line between chaos and public safety. Because these men and women, every day, put on a uniform, put on a gun, a taser, and a camera, and they go out, and they never know, nor do their children, nor do their spouse, if they're ever going to come back again in one piece that day. I dare say that when you ask a law enforcement officer to make a split-second decision on whether they're going to protect the public or themselves, they have every right from training to do that. They're human beings, they're going to make mistakes. I've worked for 30 years in behavioral health care, I've represented not-for-profits across the state on substance abuse and mental health. Law enforcement officers are especially under assault because of people that you've heard here and previously that want to defund the police, that want to turn us into community control. That's not what this city is about. That's not what Florida is about. It's not what Tallahassee is about. It's not what America is about. It's about order. It's about public safety. That's your number-one job, and you all have done an excellent job. Chief Revel has been a breath of fresh air. I've had a great relationship with every police chief that you've ever had. But I think Chief Revel has been very sensitive, and to suggest that something that's happened that's been debated a long time ago is something that's still relevant is nothing but trying to gaslight. The bottom line is, is that our law enforcement officers need our support. This contract is very well-written. You've heard what the conditions are. These ladies and gentlemen that wear a uniform need our support, and they need to know that we back them and that we're going to help to make them live the kind of lifestyle that they can enjoy, just like everybody else in our community.
You're at 30 seconds.
And I would tell you in the final analysis that I watch the evening, the morning news every morning. I watch the evening news every day. And this city is not racist. This law enforcement community of Tallahassee Police Department has never been racist. But I would just suggest one thing. You know what? If you obey a police officer, then you have nothing to worry. When you resist arrest, whatever happens is on you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker is Will Crowley, and then Cheryl Collier-Brown. Next speaker is Will Crowley, and then Cheryl Collier-Brown is our last speaker.
Thanks for joining us. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Will Crowley, and I'm a resident of the city of Tallahassee. Officers are indeed charged with making split-second decisions, which is why I oppose this agreement, which as written would allow officers to abuse amphetamines and other drugs as long as the TPD chief approves of it. It is wrong to allow armed officers to patrol our streets while abusing amphetamines, and it's wrong to retaliate against civil servants who rightly raise concerns about the risk posed by this policy. It's wrong because it undermines the efforts we've made to build trust between law enforcement officers in our community. It violates a basic sense of fairness, where we believe that no one is above the law, and it presents the threat of wrongful injury and death, not only to the general public, but to other officers who are not abusing drugs when they go to work. I'm not going to waste my breath on a commission whose majority has made clear that their PBA contributions weigh more heavily than public safety or the rule of law. Instead, I would speak to those who in the past may have supported Mayor Daley, Commissioner Williams Cox, and Commissioner Richardson, and may be feeling a little uneasy about the direction our community is going under their majority's leadership. Ask yourself three questions. How would you feel, knowing that the officer who pulls you or your loved one over late at night could be working with impaired judgment due to amphetamine abuse? How would you feel if you or your loved one was fired in retaliation simply for doing their job? And how long will you stay silent in the face of unprofessional, reckless, good-old-boy behavior at the highest levels of city government? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Cheryl Collier-Brown. Mayor, that's the last speaker I have on the item.
Great. Your name and address for the record, please. Thanks for joining us.
Cheryl Collier-Brown, 217 West Bivouard Street. I've been here, I was here at the last city commission meeting, and I'm not going to take much of your time. I'm looking at comparing me, my profession, to the police. We all have union contracts. So there's parts of the contract that nobody's going to like, just like in my case. But the contract is the contract, as Mr. Bishop said. Nobody's going to be happy, but when I walk out my door every day, I feel safe. If I don't, then I know what measures to take, that I can speak upon if I'm being mistreated. But right now, at this particular time, I'm supporting TPD. And I know a lot of people might say, "Well, why?" And a lot of people know why. And if you need to talk to me about it personally, I'll be right outside that door, and you can talk to me. But we don't need to disrupt this meeting any longer, as Mr. Bishop has stated. The contract is the contract. So if you voted for it and they write a fat, done deal. That's the way I feel. That's what we do for Leon County Schools, even though I'm retired. I still keep up with the contract, and the contract is the contract. We've had teachers that did not like our contract. So if you don't like it, then you go back and you renegotiate the next time it happens. That's the way we did it at Leon County Schools, and I guess that's the way you all do it for PBA. So we need to move on from this. There's other fish to fry that's dealing with this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Mr. Clerk.
No further speakers.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this agenda item that has not had a chance to speak or fill out a card? Anyone here? All right, let's enter into commission discussion and deliberations. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to all the public speakers in the room for attending tonight. Going to try to start at the top. First off, I support getting the starting wages for police officers to $60,000. I support getting the starting wages for firefighters to $60,000. Teachers should start at $60,000. Public servants should be paid a fair wage, and I 100% support that. But I have a lot of concerns with where we are tonight for various reasons. One, this agreement isn't ready for primetime. We've had one executive session. At that executive session, Mr. City Manager, there was not a written contract for us to review at all. And while we did touch on certain pay aspects, there were follow-up questions, like how would this be paid for? And you know, your response to how we would pay for it was, you didn't know at that time. And we haven't entered into even our budget workshops to know how we will pay for even this agreement. And then, as we talked earlier, we've also, there's a contingency that our general fund revenue may be cut $10 to $50 million if we can no longer transfer utility revenue to our general revenue. So that's just to say, we don't know what our budget situation is over the next three years, and we're deciding this in March. But I mean, I think those are things that can be worked out through our budget process to figure out how to pay for our priorities and get it done correctly. I just don't think we have the information to decide that tonight. So I think all of that should be part of negotiations and be part of the discussion. What I don't think should be part of the discussion is leaving in place the language around drug testing at the Tallahassee Police Department. If we look at Article 25, Number 7, says, "Upon confirmation of a positive test result for an illegal controlled substance, the employee shall immediately be removed from duty, placed on leave without pay status, and terminated from city employment." Mr. Manager, should that remain in the contract?
I support the contract as presented.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. It's in the contract. I support it's in the contract. Clearly, Mr. Matlow, you're leaving out a portion of it. We can go through the contract if you want, but I don't think that's the point. I support the contract as presented to you today.
Well, yeah, okay. So I'm not going to leave out a part of it. The next, Section 8, "Upon confirmation of a positive test result for the illegal use or abuse of a controlled substance, the employee shall immediately be removed from duty, placed on leave without pay status, and subject to disciplinary action up to and including termination from city employment." My question is, are those consistent with each other, and how? Or should we be attempting to remove one?
Yes, they're consistent.
Okay, so can you explain?
No, they're consistent. Mr. Mayor, I mean, obviously, you see what's happening. There's nothing new here to discuss. It's been in the contract for as long as records exist. They're consistent and actionable, and you saw the action. So, Mr. Mayor, I mean, we could do this again. Apparently, this is what we're going to do. It's in there, you read it, you attempted not to read the second piece of it. They're in there, they're actionable, and they've been in the contract for as long as records exist.
So upon confirmation of a positive test result for an illegal controlled substance, the employee shall be immediately removed from duty, placed on leave without pay status, and terminated from city employment. That is the direction you would follow, or do you think that section should be removed?
Mr. Mayor, do I have? Mr. Matmore, Mike. Let's walk through this legal standpoint with the aspects of the contract that Commissioner Matlow was talking about in regards to the drug use, but also tie in the part that the commissioners fill in to address as well in regards to the chief's discretion, which also is a touch point, I think, with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in regards to his authority as well. How does it all tie in together?
Well, it's very simple. If you use an illegal drug, there's no discretion. If you use a legal drug, but it isn't prescribed for you, then there's discretion. And I think that's because there's a possibility where someone may accidentally take a prescription drug that's, the use is not prescribed for them, but it's not an illegal drug.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this may be beyond your expertise, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Matmore, if you don't mind, as the attorney.
But in a drug testing procedure for methamphetamine or amphetamine, and amphetamine encompasses a wide range of drugs, how can you determine if an amphetamine was obtained from a prescription or an illegal street source?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, on point.
On point, sure.
On point. Let's not talk in general allegations. Let's talk about what the drug was. It was in the newspaper. It was Adderall. Just go ahead and say what it was, so that the public knows what we're dealing with.
On point, Mr. Mayor. I'm on my time.
Sure. Commissioner Matlow, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And while it was stated it was Adderall, there's no definitive proof of what the substance was based on drug testing for amphetamines. It doesn't include a prescription. And I mean, in that particular case, my understanding is there was no investigation done at all to determine if there was a legitimate prescription that could have been used. It was just taken at face value. No further questions for you, Mike, on that. I appreciate it. But I believe seven and eight are inconsistent. I believe eight should be removed, and we should be consistent with the same policy we have for the rest of the city of Tallahassee. And if we do that, I mean, this is the scenario, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. If we approve the contract as written today, we are allowing unchecked drug use within the Tallahassee Police Department solely on discretion. There's nothing in the policy that says an officer, if he isn't terminated, it doesn't say there has to be any repercussion at all. It doesn't say there has to be follow-up testing. It doesn't have any procedure for an officer to enter any type of rehab facility. There's nothing except voluntary discretion if an officer, one officer's decided they can use drugs, one officer decides they can't. And while we're saying, you know, this drug may be Adderall, but this policy applies to cocaine and provides some methamphetamines. It covers all types of illicit illegal substances, and we're not pinpointing Adderall as a separate entity. We're leaving it so broadly open, and then we're saying city of Tallahassee policy does not apply. And I think, I don't see how we can, we can't come together and support our officers in the right pay that they deserve and come together and say, our officers put their line on the life, their life on the line, and they should be compensated appropriately, but we can't come to a basic understanding that they shouldn't also behave appropriately and not engage in the use of illicit substances. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. For those of you that are here for the public hearing that is scheduled legally, advertised for 6 o'clock, it is obviously 6:03. We are finishing up the last item under general business. As soon as we are done with this item, which shouldn't take too, too long, we'll probably take a short break and then come back into the public hearing. So I apologize if you're here for the 6 o'clock public hearing, but we will get to the public hearing after this item. Commissioner Porter. And then the mayor pro temp. And then Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to clarify as well that I support the pay raises. I support the contract other than Article 8. I think it's clear that, at the very least, there has been confusion, whether they're consistent with each other or not. It's why we have attorneys, that's why we have HR directors, and we litigate these things and we interpret these things. Frankly, I feel a little rushed right now, knowing that we're already four minutes over where we were supposed to start.
Take your time, Commissioner.
I'll start and just make a motion to accept the contract with the amendment that we exclude Article 8.
On point, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second to the motion?
On point. I have a question.
Motion dies for lack of a second. On point, it's you.
Madam Attorney, if we made a modification to the contract, we would have to send it back to the union to be ratified, or can we do that today?
You cannot do it today. You would have to have bargaining on the issue.
That's right. To make sure we're in the proper posture, if the contract is not ratified as presented today, then the appropriate action would be to go back into executive session for discussion with a counteroffer, if you will, for what was ratified by the unions, correct?
You could go back into executive session to discuss it if you choose, but yes, you would have to return to the bargaining table.
Okay. Excellent.
And on point, we could give direction today to what we want to see at the bargaining table.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Madam, oh, Commissioner Porter, I'm sorry. You still on the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In that case, you know, my motion would be that we revisit this in an executive session or whatever is the correct posture, that we negotiate the Article 8. I do find it to be confusing. If we want to have a conversation about whether we want to give the chief that sole discretion and remove Article 7, I mean, to me, there's a lot of different issues going on here. But as far as generally the content of the contract, I don't have any issue with the content of the contract other than Article 8. I think it sends a confusing and conflicting message. I think that we should have accountability that's consistent across the board. I'll also just say, I think the process has been incredibly rushed, and I'm not really sure why. It is concerning to me, and for those who are here who are in support of law enforcement and want to see this through, I'm with you. But it's concerning to me when I get emails from our city attorney and from our city clerk saying that we haven't had time to do a financial impact analysis on how this is going to impact our community long-term. I support the pay raise. I support paying our officers what they deserve for the incredible work they do. They are putting their lives on the line. I really resent the equivocation, and I resent being put in the position where I feel like I have to vote down on something that I support because of one issue that I think, had we had more discussion about, we could be passing this unanimously without any controversy. I can say from what has been said about that executive session, there was unanimous, there was agreement that we wanted to see a pay raise. That agreement was not that the only thing we wanted to talk about was a pay raise. Without any other, I mean, we didn't even have an agenda, we didn't have a piece of paper with notes, with comparables, with anything. I brought up other issues at that meeting, and I brought up this issue at our last meeting. So that has been disappointing. Without addressing Article 8, I don't feel comfortable supporting moving forward, but otherwise, I would. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I mean, and I did make that motion, so.
Could you restate the motion, please?
The motion would be, and correct me, Madam Attorney, if I need any help, would be to revisit this issue in an executive session to address Article 8 of the contract.
So to postpone ratification and go back to executive session?
That is correct.
Okay, I understand the motion on the table. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, there's a second to the motion as well. I'm going to weigh in. I am not going to support the motion on the table. I am going to support full ratification. Mr. Matmore, if I can ask you a couple of questions, sir, as the attorney that represents the city. So when we had our executive session, we sent a very clear, and as Commissioner Porter duly noted, a very unanimous direction for us to go, speaking specifically after a long conversation, speaking specifically that we knew certain items were not going to be discussed, i.e. the pension, but we were concentrating on salaries, and we sent with specific direction of where we wanted salaries to begin, what we thought we wanted salaries to begin, and then also the cap. I have not talked to you since that executive session. I know you've been in contact with the city attorney's office, and I know you've been in contact with the city manager as well. What was ratified and what is being presented to us, what's the difference between that unanimous direction that was sent to you in regards to the salary, the starting salary proposed in the cap and what we were discussing?
What was agreed to on wages and the cap is within the authorization that we were given as a team at the executive session.
Excellent. How long have you been representing the city in these negotiations?
Off and on, I've been representing the city in labor matters for maybe 20 years.
In your professional experience as well, looking at law enforcement jurisdictions across the state of Florida, or I dare say, the United States, is it common to have that discretionary clause in it for a chief or a sheriff in their course of duty as the chief or as the sheriff?
Yes.
Do other municipalities have this? Is it common practice?
Yes.
Again, I am going to propose, and rarely do I do this, but I'm going to propose another motion, substitute motion for full ratification tonight. Oh, and by the way, excuse me. Let me make the motion again a second. I got one more question. Motion for ratification tonight of the PBA agreement as is proposed before us. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. What, I don't know, can you tell us, what was the final vote count at the PBA? Was it like a supermajority? Was it a majority?
It was 85% of the officers voted for the contract, 95% of the sergeants and lieutenants voted for the contract. That is one of the largest skewed positive votes that I've seen.
Thank you. And by the way, thanks for representing us. We certainly do. Regardless of the difference of the issues, I think that all five of us do agree that we appreciate your service to the city of Tallahassee. So I have made the substitute motion for ratification, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Let's open it up for discussion on the substitute. Let's open it up for discussion on the substitute. Commissioner Matlow, let me come to the mayor pro tem, Commissioner Richardson, since they haven't spoken yet, and I'll come back to you, sir.
I, I am really ready to just move on, but let me just say this. I think that this conversation around the chief's discretion has, has given us an opportunity to do something for our general employees to make sure that we formalize the use of discretion in that respect. I think that there's been some misinformation. We have not had 20-plus officers.
No.
Uh, being fired for, for misuse of, of, uh, drugs or controlled substance. There's only been, as I understand, there's been two individuals, the officer in question and a crossing guard. The others were not in TPD. So I believe that we, we have an opportunity here to bring that discretion to the general employees pool so that they too will be in a, I know it's happening, but it's not formalized. I think there'll be, should be a way to formalize having some opportunity for those employees to also have discretion being used. And, and as a matter of point, you know, we, we're talking about, you know, officers, it's like, like our TPD office has just gone wild on drugs. My office, I and my staff, we're willing to take a drug test. You have to lead by example. You can't just start pointing fingers at folks. I am willing to take the drug test right now or whenever to prove that it's a good policy, this is what we should be doing, and that none of us are exempt from doing what we should be doing. And this is a drug-free, as we said, drug-free, free work environment. So let's prove it by, I asked my colleagues to join me in this and, um, city manager, set it up. Me and my staff, we're ready to do it.
There we go.
Thank you.
There we go. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I first of all, want to bring this back to what, what we were here to discuss, and that is the broader issue of public safety in our community. We heard earlier the report from the sheriff and from Mr. King about what they're trying to do through the council on the commission on the status of men and boys to address the violent crime issue in our community. And all of us recognize that that is a tremendous issue in the community. It's our number one priority is public safety. What we've heard too is that there is a, there is an emphasis now also being placed on improving the salaries of law enforcement officers across the board. The governor has proposed a $2,000 a year pay increase for state law enforcement officers. The sheriff is contemplating an increase for his deputies at the sheriff's department. And so what we're faced with or could be faced with, if we don't move forward with increasing salaries and making our salaries competitive, we won't be able to retain or recruit the quality law enforcement officers that we have in the city of Tallahassee. That's what we're here to talk about. That's what we directed the city manager and his staff to bring us back after negotiating with the unions, was a competitive salary for our law enforcement officers that would allow us to be able to compete with other law enforcement agencies, either at the local, federal or state, or maybe even the federal level. This contract does that. I support that 100%. I think what has been done with this other extraneous issue is it's, it's been sensationalized in this community. It has been sensationalized, it has been used to draw, to draw a wedge on this commission. It's been sensationalized to draw a wedge in this community unnecessarily so. You have heard that this is a provision that has been in this contract for at least three years. I emphasize three years because it was three years ago that this contract was approved unanimously by everyone on this city commission. So if you were here three years ago and approved this contract, you approved this language. I need to say no more about that. The individual, the one individual that is being referred to, from what I understand, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, even with the follow-up testing that has been done regularly, has not tested positive for drug use. If he was rampantly using drugs, addicted to drugs, certainly that would have occurred again with the frequent follow-up testing that that individual has received. And like I said, if I'm wrong, somebody correct me. If you've got information that maybe I don't have, some, it seems like some people do have that. So to suggest that, you know, it, it was something that was rampant and it's out of control and the chief shouldn't have that kind of discretion, I, I think is absolutely And finally, to reemphasize the large percentage of the union members who approved this contract, professionals in every way, if they felt in any way that this gave cheat, the chief, our chief of police some discretion that he should not have, they would have raised that issue. They would have raised, it was not, it was passed 95% by the lieutenants and, what's the other?
Sergeant.
By the lieutenants and sergeants, 95%. So if they felt so strongly that, that this discriminated against other employees or the chief shouldn't have that kind of discretion, would 95% of those professionals have approved this contract? I don't think so. And I wouldn't dare question them as to whether or not, they would have approved this language if 95% of them approved the contract. I think we should move on, Mr. Mayor, approve this contract.
Yes, sir.
And make ourselves competitive so that we can keep our community safe and continue the initiatives that we've got going on to, to ensure that there aren't articles like what we saw in Politico suggesting that our community, our downtown in particular, is somehow unsafe and dangerous. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Again, just to bring us proper posture, there's a substitute motion on table for ratification that I made, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. For those of you that are here for the public hearing at six o'clock, I apologize, we are on our last item of general business. As soon as we are done with this item, we'll take a short break and come back immediately to the public hearing. Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I recognize the, the will of the majority, so I, I will be brief. On, on the changes, on the, the drug use item, much like today, only the changes are, are part of the agenda item today. That language was never explicitly discussed, but I think, looking at the conflicting language and looking at our own records, it was, it was agreed, I think, by both parties, including the chief, and this is probably inadvertently included in, in the contract, so it would make sense to rectify an inadvertent inclusion. My, my only final question would be, Mr. Treasurer Clerk, can you explain to us the fiscal impact of the pension changes that ratifying this would have?
Hold on, Mr. Clerk, before that, Mr. Badger, on point?
On point, Mr. Mayor. That's, that's not the case, Commissioner Matlow. The chief has not ever said it was inadvertently included. In fact, our research, you asked in the last meeting when it was added, our research goes back so far, we don't have records that show where it's not in the contract. That is countless contracts and more than 20 years worth of contracts. I know it's been suggested, that's erroneously suggested, and the chief has certainly not said that.
Okay. I, I'm only referring to the, the public record that stated that they both agreed, but he had the discretion. Nevertheless, he had the discretion, which I believe was in the email, but Mr. Clerk.
Treasurer Clerk, you want to, now, the, the fiscal analysis was conducted by the budget office and is included in the agenda item. Commissioner Matlow, are you referring to the actuarial analysis?
Yeah.
The 30-year actuarial?
I, I'm trying to determine the fiscal impact to the, the pension, if the city will have to contribute more, how much that would be.
Clerk, Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. The contract that you're voting on tonight has a provision that provides a earlier age for a cost of living adjustment for those retiring in the three-year period of the contract. That benefit change requires us to have an actuarial impact statement provided. We have asked our actuaries to begin that process, don't have that result yet, but we will receive that report. It will have a cost. You have additional benefit, it has additional cost, so we will get that back. We should have that next month and we'll provide that to you by state statute and city ordinance. We provide that to the state of Florida. That's one of, a number of different things that we, we submit on a, on a routine basis, and so we'll submit that to the state as well and be sure that you see it. Those things are calculated as a percentage of pay, so just as, as right now, the participants make a contribution to the plan as a percentage of their pay, the city makes a contribution to the plan as a percentage of pay, that actuarial statement will define for us what that new percentage of pay is that we need to contribute for that cost of living adjustment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And, and then just closing, you know, my major objection to this contract is the, the drug use item, but I'm also, you know, just for the record, I, I'm also not going to go along with the farce that it's normal to put this on the agenda without it going under review by the city attorney's office, even this year, without it being sent to the treasurer clerk for these very important cost analysis that, that we need to make proper decisions. If it's the will of the majority to move, move forward, that's okay, but it's, it's not good practice to make these decisions without all the information we need. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
On, on, on this point, Mr. Treasurer Clerk, you and I had a conversation for the past couple of days.
Yes, ma'am.
Today I ask you a very pointed question. Do you remember the question?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you repeat the question? You remember it?
I do.
Would you repeat it and give, and give your answer?
Your question was, is there anything that will prevent us from moving or prevent you from moving forward with a vote on this item tonight? And my answer to that was no, that we will need to have that actuarial impact statement prior to public hearing, because a public hearing is how we put these things into our city ordinance. We will have it before the, before that public hearing, but we do not have to have that tonight, so there's not something that prevents you from moving forward.
Thank you very much.
And I am very comfortable with the conversations, Mike, that you had with the city attorney's office. I know you talked immediately after the vote or after the, the meeting with the PBA as well, and y'all have been in constant communication. So with that, we have a motion on the table for full ratification. I made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, well, and Commissioner William, mayor pro tem, but Commissioner Richardson's formally with the second. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And the ratification of the PBA contract passes 3-2 with the mayor, the mayor pro tem and Commissioner Richardson voting in favor and Commissioner Porter and Commissioner Matlow voting against. Folks, at 6:25, we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be back at 6:30. Colleagues, I'm sorry, not, not too much more time, but we've got quite a bit on the public hearing this evening at, at 6:30. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call the public hearing to order. We have a majority. And again, let me apologize for those of you that arrived at six o'clock for the public hearing, because we do have several items on. We ran over with, with the general business before the city, but we will provide as much time as we possibly need on all of these issues. So let's go ahead and begin. We are on 14.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 14.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-0-07, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a small-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee Leon County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation from the government operational land use category to the university transition land use category at Ocala Road north of 2006 Crab Apple Drive, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-0-07, thereby adopting a small-scale map amendment, TMA 2023 007 Westwood Plaza to the Tallahassee Leon County Comprehensive Plan.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, Mayor, on 1401, we have Adam Anthony Biblo. He is here to answer questions on behalf of the applicant, if you need him.
All right.
Move acceptance.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion or staff recommendation? We are on 14.01. Commissioner Matlow, the first one. Oh, okay. Oh, of course, of course. All right. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes 4-0 with Commissioner Porter out of chambers. 14.02, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 14.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-Z-08, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land as university transition on the official zoning map from residential preservation one at Ocala Road north of 2006 Crab Apple Drive, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing, adopt ordinance number 23-Z-08, thereby amending the official zoning map from residential preservation one to university transition concurrent with the small-scale map amendment, TMA 2023 007. Any explicit disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item? Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, we have no speakers on item 1402.
All right.
Move acceptance of staff recommendation.
Been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Need no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 4-0 with Commissioner Porter out of chambers. We're in 14.03.
Item number 14.03 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-0-09, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a small-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee Leon County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation from the residential preservation land use category to the urban residential two category at Mary's Drive and Mahan Drive, providing for severability and conflicts and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-0-09, thereby adopting a small-scale map amendment, TMA 2023 001, to the Tallahassee Leon County Comprehensive Plan.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this items?
Yes, Mayor, we do have speakers on this item. The first is Frank Doolin. Frank Doolin followed by Pam Stevens.
As the speakers approach, Mayor, I'll remind those who may not have been here for the first portion of our meeting that each speaker will have three minutes for remarks. There is a light in front of the mayor and mayor pro tem that will be green while you speak and it'll turn yellow and then red at your three-minute mark.
Thank you for joining us. You name an address for the record.
My name is Frank Doolin. I live at 1225 Talbot Avenue. I'm a retired police officer. Last vote. I live in Greger Brand Hills. I grew up as a kid there. I bought my parents' house and I live there now. I've got a problem with site, I haven't seen a site plan. You're asking me to approve something, I don't know what it's going to look like. I don't think any of you would build a house or buy anything that you didn't already know what it's going to look like, being asked to be in favor of this, and I can't. I met with the people, they're great folks, they seem to be nice. I want to see a site plan. I would appreciate it if you would put this down until we see a site plan. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Pam Stevens is next. Pam Stevens will be followed by Kirsten Olson-Doolin.
Hi, thank you so much for having me tonight. My name is Pam Stevens. I live at 1001 Mary's Drive, Tallahassee, directly across from the Brandt property. My husband and I, our major concern is that the number of units that are proposed for that piece of property, I think it's 16 per acre is what the developer is hoping, which would make approximately 80 units plus. It's not only the number of the units, but the amount of traffic that would be generated by by the people that live in those units, and I count 80 units times 1.5 cars, which would be approximately 120 cars coming out of that property every morning and going back every evening right in front of our house. My husband and I have struggled over the years just pulling out of our driveway and getting in. It's like a speedway on Mary's Drive. It's a cut-through from Mikasuki Road all the way down to Mahan. We're just below the crest of the hill. We tried for years to get a stop sign there. We were unlucky in that, but we were able to get some speed bumps, but we have people that come flying over that hill. They kept zooming up the hill. Over the course of the years, we've lost four cats to speeding cars, as well have had three cars lose control at the top of the hill by Catherine. They jumped the curb in front of our house, took out our mailbox and post, and one even careened through the hedges on our property and smashed into the car in the first townhouse. So what we're asking is to know, first of all, that we're a well-established neighborhood. There are a lot of original owners. There are good families, hardworking people in that neighborhood, and please give thought to what is reasonable as far as the number of townhouses that are going to be built on that property, along with considering the impact of the number of cars that are going to be generated by the number of people that live there. So thank you for your time, and please think about what's best for everyone.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kirsten Olson-Doolin, followed by Adam Anthony Biblo.
Thank you for joining us. You name an address for the record, please.
Kirsten Olson-Doolin, 1225 Talbot Avenue in Greater Brand Hills. Thank you for listening to us this evening. I really appreciate it. I've lived in Greater Brand Hills going on 20 years, and we're raising our son there. And while I'm glad the plan is to develop the old Brandt homestead as residential, the more I think about it, the more I think it just shouldn't be such a dramatic increase in density. There is one house there on that 5.6 acres, and that's been that way since 1959. The new proposal would allow up to 16 residences per acre, which adds potentially more than 80 residences on that piece of property, and that just seems extreme. Residential preservation allows up to six residences per acre, which for the 5.6-acre parcel would be a little more than 30 units, which to me seems much more reasonable and more compatible with the single-family homes adjacent to it. Keeping this property residential preservation still allows an increase in density while likely preserving more of the tree cover and also keeping traffic within manageable levels. Please deny this proposal and support the property staying residential preservation. Also, since the developer is from South Florida originally, I would encourage him to use local companies to do the work as he develops the property, so the project also benefits local businesses and residents. I also thank the developer and city staff for being very communicative with our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Adam Anthony Biblo.
Thanks for joining us. You name an address for the record.
Adam Anthony Biblo, and I'm withholding my address per chapter 119 of the statutes. Thank you. I'm here just basically to answer any questions on the behalf of the applicant. I think what we're trying to do is correct an omission in future land use map area has changed, and he's kind of the odd man out in terms of the pattern. I think someone raised a question about site plan. Absolutely, there's no site plan yet at this point in time. It's a little premature. We will definitely have a site plan in the future that will have to comply with all the city's regulations in order to get an approval. We recognize that. One of the issues at that time will obviously be street design and transportation impacts. We'll have to address all those, or we won't get an approval of the site plan stage. But if you have any questions, I will be glad to answer.
Yeah, question. What's the applicant thinking?
What's he thinking? Like, what's he want to do? Well, I think at this time, he's thinking to do something in the realm of 50-55 dwelling units, medium-density, two-story development. You know, that's obviously not ironclad, but that's the concept he's thinking about.
Next speaker is Natalie Miller. And I believe, Mayor, that's the last speaker on 1403.
You have to introduce your guest.
Hi, I'm Natalie Muller, and this is Monroe Muller, and we live at 1705 Catherine Drive. I'm terrified to be up here, but I grew up in the neighborhood in Brandt Hills back in the 80s, and we moved out in 98, and I have returned to the neighborhood that I grew up in. And I, my house is, our backyard is the property, the Brandt Hills property, and I am against the land use change because I'm afraid that it will ruin the integrity of our community, our neighborhood, and it's just important that it maintains the integrity that's been there for 40-some-odd years. And also, if the land use was changed, and they did propose the 80s back there, it would have a significant and really bad impact on our community as far as the traffic goes now. Just with what's here, we already have speeders down Brandt, down Gene, and Catherine Drive, and I don't see how 80 homes would help that situation. There's no way to cut them from going through our neighborhood, and it's just, I just wouldn't, it would be a bad idea to allow that many homes.
You both did very well. Our next speaker, please.
No other speakers on the item.
Mr. White, Artie, can you help us out here? Got a couple of questions for you. Okay, so right now, it's currently zoned residential preservation.
That's correct.
Everything around it on that side of the road is residential preservation.
That's correct.
What can they do currently under residential preservation?
That would be allowed up to six units per acre.
Six units per acre?
Six units per acre residential.
I mean, you're looking at 30, 30 units possibly.
That's correct.
Max. Remind me, directly across the street, it's all suburban, but what, what, what is it? I'm trying to remember right there on Mahan. What is that across the street?
Directly across the street would be the side of the CityWalk development or shelter.
Got it, okay.
And I would note that we did propose expanding this amendment to the properties adjacent to this on Mary's Drive, as those townhouses and quadruplexes currently exceed the six units per acre, so this would bring the existing developments on Mary's Drive into conformity.
So the, I'm looking at your map right now, so the, the units on Mary's Drive right now, and obviously I could tell that they're attached units, and you can see the density difference, that right there is non-conforming?
It's currently non-conforming.
What is it currently zoned?
It is currently zoned residential preservation, but they exceed the six units per acre.
Got it. Okay, let's open it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, I understand the concerns of wanting to see a site plan. I know exactly what's going to happen. I do think anytime we make a land use change like this, we have to base it off an assumption of maximum allowable use, because it's really outside of our control once we make that change. I think what was stated 16 units per acre would be what we would be approving. I'm looking at this, I don't see a reason not to move forward with it based on it being on, a large portion of it on Mahan Drive, a large acreage that's underutilized within Capital Circle, where I think, you know, we are trying to push density away from the continued sprawl we've seen with other decisions that I didn't agree with, but I do think that this is an appropriate balance between the two with the neighboring duplexes, and I think all of the traffic concerns that were mentioned can be addressed when a proposal comes forward, as well as, there were a lot of concerns raised today with existing traffic violations. I think we can look into those as well to see if we can provide some traffic calming in your neighborhood where it is being used as a cut-through. I'll make a motion for staff recommendation.
Again.
Okay, there's been a motion for staff recommendation made by Commissioner Matlow and seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Mr. Mayor, one final question. So when it goes through the, when the applicant actually submits, they're going through the city process, walk me through the citizen participation.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Artie to do that.
Artie, come on up and help me out. Walk, walk us all through the citizen participation. Hey, look, I share the concerns about Mary's Drive. That's already high density right there. If they dump all their traffic on Mary's Drive, that's just going to make it that much tougher from a traffic standpoint. That's a very technical term, tougher, right. You know, so obviously, if this is passed tonight, you're working to make sure that your large entrances is off of Mahan and that we have the proper traffic flow. They're going to have these concerns. Where's the appropriate steps for them to engage?
Absolutely, Commissioner, Mayor, and Commissioners. This is kind of the first high-level stage, this is comprehensive plan, kind of looking broadly at kind of where things happen. The next item is the concurrent rezoning with it, and so we're kind of handling those two concurrently. Subsequent to that would be the site plan. That is actually managed by our growth management department, so John Reddick may want to chime in a little bit, but that is a stage where you get a lot more detail. That's where you would have to do the studies. This is looking at, you know, environmental features on the site, but one of the key parts of that is the concurrency analysis for transportation. So the applicant would have to submit what our site plan is, what we're planning on doing. The zoning provides the overall parameters, so it's six to 16 units per acre. The site plan shows exactly how many units are going to be built, and from there, we can look at the traffic and the transportation on that. That is also a public process, so there are opportunities through that process for the public to be engaged at the site plan level and not just at the comp plan and rezoning level.
Sure. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking through the public outreach and notification, and it looks like since November, there's been some, it said that initial mailing was sent to 636 property owners within 1,000 feet. Mr. and Mrs. Doolin, did you all receive that notification? You know, having served on the planning commission, you know, we run up against this all the time, and my question's always been, where were the residents in this process? And so are we saying that right now, the only thing that has occurred is a mail-out has gone out to 636 households, and it may not have impacted, may not have gotten to the people who are just outside of the 1,000? Has there been any community engagement, any coming together to discuss?
There has, Commissioner. In addition to the mailing out the notices to the residents within 1,000 feet of the property, we also notify the homeowners association, any homeowners association, neighborhood association in that area as well, and so that the neighborhood leaders have that information so they can convey it. We've done a public open house with the community. We heard that some people didn't receive notifications, so we actually resent the notices and scheduled a separate public open house specifically with the neighborhood association and those members, just to make sure that we covered our bases, because we're always a little concerned if we hear that someone didn't get it. So we resent them, and then they were notified of the local planning agency public hearing. There was an opportunity for public input at that point as well, and tonight is also the public hearing for adoption.
Okay, and when, and this went to the planning commission? And what was the vote there?
It was to approve.
Unanimously?
It was.
I am going to support the motion on the table, but I'm very cautious. John, I know you can do a great job as well, working with the citizens and with the residents. Now, I agree with Commissioner Matlow. I am usually very much in favor of higher densities were appropriate, and I do think on Mahan, because it's a major traffic corridor, it is appropriate, but I think we all share the same concerns. We want to make sure this is done right, because you have that older, traditional neighborhood that does surround it. That all takes place during the, when the applicant actually submits and through all the, you know, talking with the, with the neighborhoods. I'm going to go ahead on record, Mr. Biblo, where are you? I'm going to go ahead on record and let you know that I am very much interested in keeping as much traffic off of the residential streets as you possibly can. And making your egress and your entrance and exits of this neighborhood on Mahan, and make sure that there's the proper buffers that protects the pre-ex. We don't have to get in the conversation, I'm just saying, we definitely with your applicant, I want to make sure that they are conscious of an existing neighborhood that is surrounding them.
I think we would like to get the access on Mahan, excuse me, but I just want to make sure that's, you know, would be something that's appropriate per city growth management planning and DOT, because you do have some ingress-egress issues with the traffic there and a vertical curve, but that would be preferable from our point of view as well.
Understood. Just saying what my preference is. Mayor Pro Tem.
One more thing, well, maybe a couple more things. This, I know we're interested in trying to do infield development, but this is also why we have to be forward-thinking and making sure that we have room, not only to do infield, but also to do in the outer areas as well, because if we're not able to do it here, we do need to have somewhere to continue to develop. And is your neighborhood association active? Okay, see, that's an issue we also run into. That, you know, we're sending information to the neighborhood association, but if they're not active, then the information's not getting to the residents, so Artie, Mr. Reddick, we need to get with the neighborhood affairs, and let's get this community engaged, because it sounds like they may or may not have known about this. The neighborhood association being not active may not have gotten it out like it needs to get out to the neighbors. So I think that we need to have, take extra care to make sure that going forward, that the neighbors in this community are kept up to date as to what's going on. And Artie, we've had this conversation before about, we need to let the public know what this process is, how this process works. We need to have it in pictures and words, so folks will know that this happens here, and then this is where it goes next, and this happens here, and this is where it goes next. This is, you know, just so folks know what the process is and can at least have an opportunity to understand and get a better understanding of what's about to happen to them in their neighborhood. I respect, I live in an old neighborhood, right, Ramona, and we respect the fact that our neighborhood is an older neighborhood, and we're very protective of it. We have a lot of trees in our neighborhoods and a lot of natural features that we are very attracted to and protective of, and I'm sure every neighborhood feels the same way. We've got to make sure that our residents are kept up to breast and know what's happening before it gets here, so that they don't have to come here and find out here what's going on. So that's what I want to say about the matter. Thank you.
Excellent. Just remember, we got a motion on the table for staff recommendation by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any other comment? Need none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously 5-0. We are on item number 14.04. Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.04 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-Z-10, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designated land medium-density residential on the official zoning map from residential preservation 2 at Mahan Drive and Mary's Drive, providing for a conflict and severability and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-Z-10, thereby mending the official zoning map from residential preservation to medium-density residential district concurrent with the small-scale map amendment, TMA 2023-001, 1718 Mahan Drive. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. This is the second half, correct?
Yes.
Any public comment?
Kirsten Olson-Doolin, if you have additional comments. And Adam Anthony Biblo, those two are the two we have signed up.
And Adam Antony-Biblo, those two are the two we have signed up for the side. Ms. Doolan?
Kirsten Olson-Doolan, 1225 Talbot Avenue. I just wanted to add that you probably aren't, with everything else going on, aware of the history, which is initially, the proposal was to turn this into an area where commercial could also be. So that's why I'm very happy it's gonna be residential, because we were horrified by that idea. And then I want to compliment staff and working with the developer to come up with something that was a little more amenable to us. So this is better, but, you know, we definitely are very, have a lot of concerns. And since we haven't seen the site plan, there's obviously a lot of things that we have to work on going forward.
Yes, ma'am. Understood. Mr. Biblo is here for questions if needed. Okay, let's open it up for discussion.
Move option number one.
Second.
Okay, these two go together. So option number one has been moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. We're on item number 14.05. Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.05 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-O-11 in ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, adopting a small scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leyton County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation from heavy industrial land use category to the suburban land use category at 5411 Capital Circle Southwest, writing for severability and conflicts and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-O-11, thereby adopting a small scale map amendment TMA 2023-003 for the Tallahassee-Leyton County Comprehensive.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Colleagues?
Move option one, Mr. Mayor.
Option one's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. We're on item number 14.06.
Item number 14.06 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-Z-12 in ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land as general commercial C2 on the official zoning map from industrial at 5411 Capital Circle Southwest, writing for conflict and severability and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-Z-12, thereby amending the official zoning map from industrial to general commercial C2 concurrent with the small scale map amendment TMA 2023-003.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues?
Move option one, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Staff recommendation's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Item number 14.07. Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.07 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-O-13 in ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, adopting a small scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leyton County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation from lake protection land use category to high intensity, high intensity urban activity center land use category at 3534 Thomasville Road, writing for severability and conflicts and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-O-13, thereby adopting a small scale map amendment TMA 2023-004 for the Tallahassee-Leyton County Comprehensive.
All right, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, hold on, I got a motion for...
I just had a question.
Okay, let me get the motion first. Motion made by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Matlow, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think this is probably for Mr. Wyatt. Can, can you just walk us through going from the reasoning behind lake protect, going from lake protection to high intensity?
Absolutely, Commissioner. The lake protection land use category is really only intended to be applied to properties within the Lake Jackson drainage basin. And this property is outside of that. And so the adjacent land uses all around it is activity center. And so we would take it to what's consistent with around it. But the, the, the reason for it is, is outside of the drainage basin.
The development on the property wouldn't affect Lake Jackson?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Seeing no further discussion. The mayor pro temp has made staff recommendation as an option, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. 14.08. Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.08 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-Z-14 in ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land as high intensity urban activity center on the official zoning map from Lake Jack, from Lake Protection at 3534 Thomasville Road, writing for conflict and severability and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the, the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 23-Z-14, thereby amending the official zoning map from Lake Protection to high intensity urban activity center concurrent with the small scale map amendment TMA 2023-004, 3534 Thomasville Road. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues?
Move option one, Mr. Mayor.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by the mayor pro temp. Further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Item number 14.09. Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.09 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-O-15 in ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, adopting a small scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leyton County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation residential preservation land use category to the university transition land use category for properties within 38.12 acre area west of Stadium Drive and north of Pensacola Street, writing for severability and conflicts and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and do not adopt ordinance number 23-O-15, thereby not adopting the small scale map amendment TMA 2023-005, Lambert Heights and Maryvale subdivisions for the Tallahassee-Leyton County Comprehensive Plan.
All right, Mr. Clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
We do. Mayor, the first speaker on the item is Stephen Leoni. Steve Leoni followed by Jennifer Pierce.
Good to see you. Name and address for the record, please.
3951 West Millersburg Road.
If you would, pull that microphone up. You're taller than some of the other speakers.
There you go. So I just wanted to give a couple of comments about it. I've spent the last 30 years redeveloping and improving the west side of campus to the north and south along West Pensacola Street. And, you know, we own hundreds of homes in the 04 zip code and 10 in Lambert Heights. My research shows about 98% of the homes in Lambert Heights are not homesteaded and almost entirely student rentals. Lambert Heights is located in the opportunity zone and borders FSU to the north and to the east. Designating Lambert Heights as university transition promotes student housing growth and all the ancillary businesses and services needed to support the student population of Leon County. Lambert Heights is substantially closer to campus than Heritage Grove is located, which is much further to the west and houses a majority of the Greek life at FSU. And let's see, Lambert Heights is also in the MMTD and already has all the services like bus transportation, bike paths, walkable options to get to class at FSU and family. And Lambert Heights is a perfect candidate for university transition. And I ask that you please approve this comp plan amendment this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Jennifer Pierce and then Brian Draft.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Jennifer Pierce, I'll listen. Jennifer Pierce, 1383 Conservancy Drive East. As I said, I'm Jennifer Pierce and I own 16 of the homes in the neighborhood that we are discussing this evening. I'm here to voice my support for the Lambert Heights and Maryville rezoning from residential preservation to university transition. The 34.48 acres is currently surrounded by university transition zoning already. If you look at the map of the area, you will also see that it's surrounded by Heritage Grove, other apartment complexes. And as Stephen said, nearly all the homes in the area are occupied by student renters. I agree that preserving residential preservation zoning is important, and it should be protected but only when appropriate. Keeping an area zoned as residential preservation when 98% are student rentals and it is already surrounded by university transition is not consistent with the intended residential preservation designation. Additionally, change in use will allow for developmental flexibility while still allowing for any current homeowners to remain in their homes. Approval of this change allows for economic development and growth, literally steps from FSU. Approval of this change allows for higher density where appropriate, as discussed as a priority earlier in this meeting about another agenda item. If you look at the summary that was in the book outside and that you're all provided with earlier, staff mentions, and it's to the bottom of, I think it's the first page about this agenda item, staff says, "The subject site no longer aligns with the intent of the residential preservation and more closely resembles the description of the university transition land use category and zoning district." So we are here today to ask you to approve the change from residential preservation to university transition. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Brian Draft.
Do we have other speakers on this item?
No, sir. That's the last speaker we have.
All right. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Brian Draft. I live at 1383 Conservancy Drive East. I'm here tonight to talk about Lambert Heights as well. I own real estate in this area and also the surrounding area. You know, I'm here to voice my support for the rezoning from RP to university transition. There is a, a lot of benefit. You know, we're completing nearly 35 acres of, you know, RP to UT that is surrounded, encompassed, you'll say, by current zoned UT. The existing subject is almost all student rentals, as you've heard previously. The approval of this change allows for economic flexibility while still allowing current single family homeowners to remain in their homestead. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues.
Move staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation has been, that's in favor of the...
Yes.
Has been made by the mayor pro temp. Is there a second?
I'll second, sure.
Okay.
I just want to confirm.
Commissioner Porter.
That's option number, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's option number two, which is approval.
Approval. Yes, ma'am. Good point. Option number two.
Oh, that was my bad.
All right. So we've got the motion that's been made by the mayor pro temp. I have seconded the motion. All those in favor, oh, Commissioner Matlow?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and I'm going to support the motion. I, I just wanted to, you know, weigh in on, on the area anytime we're, we're removing residential preservation and looking holistically, especially as we start looking at these student neighborhoods, not just this one, but surrounding the stadium. You know, not, not every neighborhood is 100% student rentals. And there are housing within these neighborhoods and surrounding where, where, where there's a mix of student populations and other populations that are taking advantage. I, I also lived in those houses when I, when I was at, at Florida State. But, but I do think we have to look at how we're going to handle the growth of the student population in the long term, and which areas we think it's acceptable, and which areas we think we, we really need to take a stand to preserve existing successful neighborhoods that are also close to the university. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Mayor, pretend.
I agree with what, what Commissioner Matlow has said. But I think we also got to make sure that we work very closely with the universities and what their plans are for, for expansion, especially as their student population continue to grow, just like our cities continue to grow. We've got to put people somewhere. And so I think we, I agree, but we've got to make sure we work very closely with the plans for the University of Florida State and Florida A&amp;M and Tallahassee Community College as they continue to develop their plans for how to handle, handle the student housing issues.
Excellent. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Item number 14.10. Madam Attorney.
Item number 14.10 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 23-Z-16 in ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land as university transition on the official zoning map from residential preservation one for properties within the 38.12 acre area west of Stadium Drive and north of Pensacola Street, writing for conflict and severability and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing, do not adopt the ordinance number 23-Z-16, thereby not amending the official zoning map from residential preservation one to university transition concurrent with the small scale map amendment TMA 2023-005, Lambert Heights and Maryvale subdivisions. Any ex parte communications concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Okay. So just to be clear, in order for us to be concurrent between the item that we just took place and this, the, the, the option to make it smooth would be option number two?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
Waving support.
We do not.
Waving support.
Move option number two, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
Uh, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Any, any other comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Madam Attorney, do we have anything else to come before us at the public hearing this evening?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Excellent. We are on unagended speakers. Mr. Clerk, how many unagended speakers do we have this evening?
I have five speakers at this time, Mayor.
All right.
I have learned that that means we probably have seven. I just haven't gotten the last two yet.
All right. Shall we begin?
The first is Bernard Stevens. And then Nita Davis will be our second speaker.
Excellent. Thank you. Hey, thanks for sticking around till 7:15 tonight. We appreciate it. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, yes, yes. My name is Reverend Bernard Michael Stevens, Jr. My address is 2502 Holton Street.
Uh-oh.
That's my address. Ladies and gentlemen, I admire y'all leadership. I admire everything you do. What I experienced on March 4th was one of the most uncomfortable experiences as a man that I could ever experience in my life from the Tallahassee Police Department. I have never called for help, never called for help until I wanted to make a change in our community. Ladies and gentlemen, I sent every last one of you, I sent every last one of you last night to your aides, the preservation of integrity. When you look at the word integrity, what does this mean? It means right or wrong. Ever since 1963, the march in Washington has been jobs and justice. Yet instead, people stand before you today, and they're still hollering, "Jobs and justice!" But what we miss is the justice part. The justice come before somebody dies. The justice come when we identify right or wrong. Ladies and gentlemen, I ask you, as you look at the police reports, I ask you, as you look at those body cam footage, if I am wrong, as I know I'm not, I promise to God, as God is my living witness, I stand before you as a man who is labeled as a convicted felon. But one thing that I know, he who started a good work in me shall see it through. I will not allow us on a piece of paper to dictate who I am, the man who I become. They will not persecute me and crucify me as somebody who I'm not. Ladies and gentlemen, I ask you, take the time out of your day, take the time out of your schedule, and look at what I sent you. If it not be the truth, I tell you what, there's something wrong with our leadership. We have to clearly identify right or wrong. I'm with correction when you're right. But if we're not correcting people when they're wrong, there is no way possible we can possibly ask for change. Change starts when it's in ourself. And if I was man enough and humble enough to go through a valley experience, and I had to be drugged, I had to be set in prison, I had to sit there because I told the truth. I went to Tallahassee Police Department when they put a card on my door and say, "I wanted to talk to you." They talked to me, I went to the office, and I told them, Internal Affairs. I told them, yes, I did. Spanked my child, and he had a bruise. You know what they did against me? They took my words, and they used them against me. I got locked up, I got to court, and I was ashamed because I told the truth. But I stand before you, not telling you, I again put to you truth that there is a lack of transparency in the Tallahassee Police Department. And I beg of you to start a formal investigation today. And if you don't start it, don't do it with haste, do it with the goodwill in your heart, to know that at the end of the day, right will always win. If we continue to sow bad seeds, we're gonna get bad seeds of discord. If we continue to do the right thing, oh, all we're doing is helping people up. We're not gonna sit around here and allow people to fall down. We're gonna bring them up when they're coming down. And you got to bring people up. up the right way, not the way of policy and procedure. Put that aside and put what's right, and that starts with God.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Nita Davis, and then Mark Ocasaco.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Nita Davis and I live at 1111 East Paul Russell Road, 32301. I apologize, but I'm going to read this today because you guys all know I have a habit of wandering around. So I'm here today to ask from my heart for the City of Tallahassee to agree to be the managing entity for the Florida Forever Project application. I want to say thank you to Commissioner Richardson, Porter, and Matlow, and all the staff that have taken time to meet with us. We look forward to meeting with Commissioner William Cox and with Mayor Daley coming up. The English Forest Proposed Nature Corridor would benefit all of Leon County, Tallahassee, and beyond. This could be a signal to all the rest of Florida that its capital took a brave stand on conservation by voting to be the managing entity for this proposed Florida Forever Project. Just imagine for a moment, for a moment, what a living legacy you can leave. And I just ask if you have any questions.
Thank you. Look forward to meeting. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Mark Ocasaco, followed by Midori Ocasaco.
Thanks for joining us. Thanks for waiting around, y'all, till 7:15, 7:20. Name and address for the record, please.
I have a...
We're getting you set up, yes, sir.
I apologize, Mayor. Yes, my name is Mark Ocasaco, and I live at 1689 Silverwood Drive, part of the Blairstone Forest neighborhood. Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, thank you for listening to my comments. Last December, our team, Save the English Forest, spoke about our attempt to apply for Florida Forever New Project. The proposed project is called the English Forest Preserve, which you can see here on this map right here. To update you, on February 23rd, we were able to meet with city staff personnel. In alphabetical order, this included Keith Burnstead, Jody Cahoon, Ashley Edwards, Darren Jewmanville, John Reddick, Steve Schaefer, Wayne Tetter, and Artie White. And my apologies if I've missed anyone, but it was a larger group than we were expecting. My thanks to all of them for making time to meet with us. The discussion centered around the proposed Paul Russell Road extension and the feeder roads leading to it. These roads and their stormwater requirements were the sticking point the last time we asked for the city to be the managing entity. But a breakthrough did occur during the meeting when we mentioned that we would be willing to accept a feeder road from the southwest portion of the PUD to the Paul Russell Road extension right here. We agreed to have a follow-up meeting, which would include Florida Forever and the landowners' representatives, and we hope that this upcoming meeting will lead to an agreement for the city to become the managing entity of the Preserve. And the tentative date for that meeting is Thursday, April 6th. On a related note, we are looking to expand the English Forest Preserve southward, and this land is owned by the St. Joe Company here. This is the Preserve up here, and this is going to be the St. Joe land down here. This would connect the Preserve to the boundary of the Apalachicola National Forest, which is down in this area here. And incidentally, north of Orange Avenue, right here, there are two neighborhoods, Indian Head Acres and Blairstone Forest. Both of these have extensive greenways and conservation easement. Currently, the wildlife from the English Forest travels back and forth between the forest and these neighborhoods. Extending the southern boundary of the project to the Apalachicola National Forest will create a north-south urban nature corridor from the National Forest to St. Augustine Road. So from down here all the way up to here would be the corridor.
You have about 20 seconds.
The biodiversity of the forest, the wetlands, the sinkholes, and the ravine would provide visitors a place to enjoy and unwind. This would be a lasting legacy for Tallahassee and neighboring regions. So to conclude, we ask for your support for the city to become the managing entity for the English Forest Preserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Midori Ocasaco, and then Michael McLaughlin.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Midori Ocasaco, and I reside in Blairstone Forest at 2776 Red Maple Ridge. Today is a pivotal day. A year ago, our city voted to include the remaining 500 acres to the English property PUD. Currently, our team's primary asking is for our City of Tallahassee to be the managing entity of our proposed project for the Florida Forever New Project application. It is vital for our proposed project to have a committed government managing entity in order to submit our completed application by April 28th. Our proposed project is the 250-acre English Forest Preserve within the 770-acre PUD. This proposed English Forest Preserve with its three-mile nature corridor starts with three parcels between Orange Avenue and Paul Russell Road and runs south through the PUD to Tram Road. This passive forest preserve would be a continuation of natural habitats in Indian Head and Blairstone Forest neighborhoods north of the English property. This forest preserve with its nature corridor could potentially extend beyond the PUD and interface with the Apalachicola Forest, National Forest, through St. Joe parcels to the south. Moreover, this English Forest Preserve could be the south gateway to adjacent managed public lands with established nature trails in South Leon and Wakulla Counties. The south gateway would serve as an introduction to invite all Floridians and visitors to explore diverse natural habitats and their histories, for example, along Tallahassee-St. Mark's Historic Railroad State Trail in Leon Sink's neck geological areas, in Woodville Track, Wakulla State Forest, and Edward Ball Wakulla Springs State Park, to name just a few, and last but not least, in St. Mark's National Wildlife Refuge. We are grateful the city staff will meet with our team again in early April. May our city carefully and fairly consider the merits to be the managing entity for this noteworthy English Forest Preserve. This forest preserve with its nature corridor will ultimately be a lasting legacy for our Tallahassee, for our Leon County, for our Florida forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Mr. Clerk.
Michael McLaughlin, and waves his time so that we have heard from our last speaker.
Actually, Ms. Sika Green is here from the Children's Services Council at my invitation.
Yeah, come on, Ms. Green.
Ask her to come down and give us an update. I ask her to do this because we've read in the paper recently.
Hold on just a second.
Okay.
Hold on. We're going to get out of unagended speakers. We're going to go to Commissioner time. I'm going to recognize you first, which will give her a little bit more time than three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Per your invitation, if you don't mind. I didn't mean to interrupt you there.
Okay, thank you. That was for a good cause. I might be interrupting.
That was a good interruption.
For a good interruption.
There we go.
So I'm going to ask Ms. Sika Green, the Executive Director for the Children's Services Council, to come forward, and you've probably been seeing in the paper recently that she is trying to build her infrastructure so that they can help the children in our community. And right now, she's staffed with herself and three other people, and she's trying to hire some more folks, and I just want her to come and give us an update on what's going on in our city regarding our Children's Services Council. Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you, and welcome to chambers.
Thank you so much. First of all, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and greetings to all the rest of the city commissioners and officers, staff, and everybody else that's here. I was fortunate enough to give a few comments at the county commission meeting yesterday, and so when Mayor Pro Tem, Williams Cox, asked me if I could come today, I said absolutely, and I will wait until I have a chance to provide a quick update to you on what we are doing at the Children's Services Council. So I am Sika Rose Green, and the council address is 2002 Old St. Augustine Road, Building A, Suite 50, Tallahassee 32301. And we have been very, very busy. By way of quick history, the council was approved by the voters by almost 70% in November of 2020, had its first meeting in May of 2021, did their first trim in that fall and started collecting abalorm revenue that fall. For the fiscal year '22, collected about $6.9 million. I joined in January of '22 and went through my first trim later that fall, and we are projected to raise about $8 million in abalorm tax revenue. I'm going to take these glasses off so I can see you guys, in abalorm tax revenue. In the first year last summer, if you remember, we did a summer funding cycle where we awarded $1.56 million to about 30 programs, 29 agencies here in town, and we were able to provide 13,000 individual services to children, youth, and families in our community. By way of reminder, that was a very quick funding cycle. That funding was to fill the gap created by COVID. As you remember, parents were going back to work, children were going to be back in summer programs, and we wanted to make sure that there would be programs in which they could participate. This year, we are poised to get $10.1 million awarded before the end of the fiscal year, which is September 30th. We have allocated $10.7 million for programming, and we have an operating budget of $12.8 million. Last summer, we did it with two and a half people, two and three-quarter people. This year, we now have four full-time staff plus three-quarters of a staff, and our council is being very deliberate about approving additional staff so that we can really get moving, get this funding out, and then work toward getting the other strategic priorities passed to get what we believe will be continual and ongoing funding. So today at 6 o'clock, our application closed for the summer funding that we will be awarding. It's in two areas, summer learning and summer feeding. Summer learning is designed to help keep our students on par with the learning that they had during the last academic year, help with that summer slide, keep them engaged, and keep them in programs for the duration of the summer. The summer feeding goes right with our needs assessment as well in that we know that a lot of our children receive their nutritious meals while they are in school. So when they are out for the summer, that can be something that is challenging for their families. So the summer feeding funding will look to expand feeding programs that are already going on, for example, summer break spots where they now require, they've gone back to requiring, that the children stay there and consume the food on-site. We expect that we will have applications that will expand that by allowing there to be food that can be taken to the home, and not just for that child, but for any children in that home, and for that matter, any adults that are in that home as well. So we have allocated $1.6 million. Our applications have come in. I did cheat a little bit and found out that we are currently at 40 applications, and it's really probably going to be more like 40-plus applications because there are some entities that applied in both service lines. And then our council has approved a strategy under family support, and tomorrow, we expect that they will approve the statements of work for us to issue RFPs on March 27th in three areas. The first is a family resource center, so we'd be looking to issue an ITN for one provider to help us create up to three family resource centers in specific neighborhoods, and those centers would have services that are germane and specific to what that neighborhood needs. The second one is family strengthening and parental education, parent education, to help with strengthening the family. As I said yesterday, we know that the family is the first teacher of all children. It is the basis of the stability of the child. And so if we have a way to help families who are struggling, I am a parent of three kids, and I didn't have the formula. I mean, they're now 22, 20, and 16, and I'm just about, I'm not looking back, I'm only going to look forward. So I think about, I had my mother, I had a husband, I had a sister-in-law and a sister. Many of our families in certain zip codes just don't have that. So that is what that one is about. And then the third one is mentoring, because we know that for families that are challenged, if those children can have just one caring adult, normally a non-relative adult, it can really make a difference in their life. And so we've got the mentoring as well. Additionally, we will be partnering with the community to determine where our funding will go for mental health services, and then we will also look at non-traditional childcare, and I am smiling because I know that childcare is a big thrust for this council, specifically the mayor. So just wanted to provide you with a brief update on where we are and what we're doing. If you have not had a chance to come by and see our facility, we welcome you to do that. It is at the address that I gave, and at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So currently, you have a staff of yourself and three and a quarter, three-quarters of a person, or how do you say?
Yes.
And you're trying to hire the rest of that third quarter, one fourth quarter, and two other folks. So in a comparable county, how many staff members would they typically have to do this work?
So when you look at other counties that have CSCs similar to ours, and when I say similar, I mean similarly funded, you're looking at Martin County and St. Lucie County as well as Alachua County. St. Lucie and Martin County CSCs have been around between 20 and 30 years. Martin County is currently at about 14 or 15 positions. St. Lucie County has 11. Alachua County has 13. The thing I think that's important to, so it's very hard to compare apple to apple because the budgets are done very differently for each CSC. However, we are doing, trying to stand up the work that a 20- or 30-year CSC would do. And so with that, if you go to our website, cscleon.org, you can see our board packet materials for tomorrow. We're just presenting to them the ability to increase our staff to seven full-time persons, and I think that that will get us where we need to be for the next several years to ensure that we're doing what the citizens want it done with their taxpayer money.
And so I asked Sika, what was the teacher-to-student ratio in the school system? And when I think about that, I think about your staff ratio to, you know, getting these resources to all of the kids in our communities, and elementary school is like 1 to 18, right? And so forth and so forth. So I'm hoping that our community will, and your board, will support the fact that you need help in order to be able to get these resources to where they need to be rapidly and that you're, you know, that they will support you. So I would thank you for coming. I don't know if the other commissioners or the mayor, anyone has any other questions, but I wanted to just extend my support, and if there's anything I can do personally to help, I'm happy to do that, you know, testify to your board or whatever, write letters.
Thank you. And of course, it is a public meeting. Anyone can come. We will be meeting at 4 o'clock tomorrow. We will actually be at Pine View Elementary School as we are losing one of our council members. The very esteemed Principal Carmen Connor is terming out, and so we're going to be at her school to have that meeting and to recognize her. Thank you again, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Mayor, and all commissioners. Really appreciate this opportunity to give you an update on where we are.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mayor Pro Tem, you still have the floor.
I wanted to go back. I think... I thank you, Mayor. I wanted to go back to city manager. I'm very serious about this drug testing. Again, I've already spoken with my, with Dr. Davis, and we're, we're ready to do it. I just think that we have to lead by example, and since there's been so much discussion about it, let's set it up. I'm ready to do it, and I don't know what the process is. Get somebody to walk us through it, tell me where I need to go, what I need to do, whatever kind of sample you need, you can have it. And let's, let's go, go forward. And I also want to, want to say too that here's an opportunity for us to, this, this has brought light, the opportunity to do some things for our general employees, make sure that they have a formalized process. I know that, you know, every situation is different, but have a formalized process for how, if for some reason someone makes a mistake, that they have an opportunity that if supervisor has some discretion to allow them to be able to not lose their job, because we know that, you know, this, this time is really hard to find, find a job or what have you. And we have, we have people who, who are, you know, struggling, and we don't want to, like you said last night, we don't want to throw them out with the trash because we don't have a provision to allow for some compassion or some, some opportunity to work somewhere else if, if, if this should happen. So.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment on that? Commissioner, thank you for saying that, and, and I will tell you that, let me ask Ms. Ojutaiho to come forward. I'll just take a moment, Mr. Mayor. We do have a very robust policy as it relates to drug testing. All the individuals that are subject to that are not in the same status or federal rules and local application, and there are a couple of elements I think we should look at. We are what I would characterize as a second chance organization. Many years ago, the city commission took action to ban the box on our applications, and so we look for ways to support our employees while maintaining a safe, productive, you know, employment base. There are a couple of areas I think should be re-inspected. One, I think you were mentioning, if for whatever reason, if you're in a safety-sensitive area that's subject to federal rules, there may, you may not be able to keep your job. There is no discretion on that. But I will tell you, I've come into that situation personally as a department director in different capacities in the city, where you can have generally a really good employee that's doing a good job, they get tested through, you know, random, a random process, and you would like to be able to retain them, maybe in a non-safety-sensitive area. Maybe it's to do with driving or something of this nature. And so I've asked, I've been our assistant city manager over in that area, to take a look at it. I think we should. I appreciate you bringing it up. I think it's consistent with our organization, and I think a little bit of flexibility probably is more reflective of who we are as an organization, as well as really what other organizations are doing. So we will, we will certainly look at that and, and apply the experience we have, the occasions in the past where we think that makes sense to strengthen our organization.
I have been in traffic and have encountered cars that have aroma coming from them, sitting in traffic, walking in, in different places. Exposure to something that you didn't necessarily intend to ingest can also cause something like this to happen, depending on when, when it occurs. I remember many years ago, someone, and I don't know how true it was, I used to love poppy seed muffins, and they told me that, you know, a poppy seed muffin could, could have prompted a positive drug test. I don't know if the poppy seeds now as potent as they were back then, but, but nevertheless, that's what I was told. So I'm just saying, sometimes this is no fault of your own that you are exposed to something that, you know, you're, you're just going about your business. I hate for someone to lose their job because of something that they didn't intend to have.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Richardson, we'll just keep going down the line.
Thank you, sir. I was approached by Mr. De Laetry Hollinger. I, I spoke with the city manager and deputy city manager about this the other day in my briefing. He is interested in applying for a historical marker to recognize Ms. E., make sure I get it right, Lillian Spencer of Speed Spencer Steven Park fame. She's a former, or the late Ms. Spencer was the principal of Bond Elementary School and very active in the Bond community, and he's going to do all the work. He's going to pay whatever expenses are incurred, but he has to have permission from the city to use the plot of land that he wants to put the marker on. And I understand from the city manager that that shouldn't be a problem for us to accommodate.
Mr. Mayor, we, we have looked at that. De Laetry, I think, approached, probably Ashley Edwards, but, but he's brought it to our attention. We've looked at it from a staff point of view. We have no objection. We can accommodate that. If, if that's the will of the commission, that, that certainly would be our findings. Now, we also had some parallel things that were happening in the Bond Linear Park to recognize Ms. Spencer. We, we want to make sure we coordinate those well, and this, you know, these, these are lying together, but we're certainly prepared to move forward and don't have any objection if that's of no concern to the commission or the, the commission in support of that.
All right. Do you?
Does there need to be a motion?
Yeah. We need to bring an agenda item back, or we good to go?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's very straightforward. I think Commissioner Richardson described it exactly as it is, and we don't have any, any concerns at all.
Commissioner Richardson's got a motion on the table, signed it by the Mayor Protam. Let's open it up for in discussion. See none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Got it. Passes unanimously, 5-0. Commissioner?
That's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to thank the entire growth management team for meeting with the residents in regard to the Forever Florida English property proposal. I, I think we, we got to the crux of a lot of the different concerns from, from both parties of how we could collectively work, work together on that. And I know, you know, I think the, the residents' major concern was the city or a local government entity would have to be the managing entity. And I know within growth management, there were concerns about roadways and stormwater as, as it increased, but I do think we have a great opportunity here to bring everybody collectively and, you know, as a city, try to find whether it's the exact proposal or something similar that can check all the boxes and, and we could take the lead on. So I, I would ask for support that, that we give the city manager and his staff direction to, to work towards that common goal of becoming the managing entity and finding a mutually agreeable project.
Second.
Well, on point, before I recognize the motion, can I ask a courtesy? Two of us have not had our meetings with the group yet. I'm really not familiar with what we're talking about. Can I ask Commissioner Matlow, can we just wait one meeting so that, is it, is it, Mayor Protam, have you had?
I haven't.
Okay. So it's Diane, and I haven't even had a chance to meet with the group, and I'm not even familiar with what we're, what we're talking about with the process and everything.
I'll, I'll redraw the motion and bring it to the next meeting.
Cool. Thank you. Appreciate it. You have the floor.
Number two, Mr. Manager, can I get a copy of the public records and the body camera footage that Mr. Stevens was referenced?
Commissioner, are you, are you making a public records request for the body camera footage? And we'll find out the details. I think the gentleman said March 4th.
Yeah, I think there was a request put in. I, I just want to, I don't know if I, you've already sent the information or if I have it, but just have a copy of all the information requested.
If there's not a request, we'll make sure we put one in.
Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow, can I ask a question? Because I thought you said he sent it to our aides.
Hold on, hold on just a second. We got it.
I, I got a forwarded information. I think I got everything except the body camera footage. That was, that's in my head. Thank you. A third, third question, since, since our last meeting, which was a pretty chaotic meeting, so to speak, we saw the termination of HR Director Ellen Blair, and, Mr. Manager, I was, I was just inquiring about what the reasoning was.
Okay. Let me jump in real quick. Madam Attorney, you know, I've had a conversation in regards to this meeting, this discussion. You want to weigh in?
Basically, my advice would be, because we do have a threat of litigation, that we not discuss this publicly.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Attorney. And, Mr. Green, if you want to relate that to me outside of a public meeting, I would be happy to just have the information, as I believe it was shared with other commissioners.
Mr. Mayor, I have not shared that with any other commissioners.
Oh. There was a, there was a press conference that said that it wasn't related to the drug test, and it was from a different reasoning. So I was under the impression that that information was shared with the mayor, but if I'm mistaken.
You are mistaken. What was stated at the press conference was, as it has been stated, is it was not just one issue as reported in the paper.
Okay. So we don't know what that issue is. We don't really have any explanation of what happened.
We're not going to have this discussion by advice of the attorney that she just told us of potential litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My third question relates to the latest inspector general investigation. We don't really need to litigate it. It just seems, I'm frustrated because it just seems so silly that we're using city resources to conduct investigations over whether treasurer clerk employees can have access to public records, which is his number-one job and, and responsibility. And I just, I don't understand how we get to a point where this can't be resolved with a phone call or talking to the treasurer clerk or talking to an employee. Like, how have we gotten so far off norms that we can't just pick up the phone and communicate with colleagues to resolve these types of things that we're having an investigation? And of course, the inspector investigation, inspector general's investigation reveals everything was in accordance with the Smarsh policy, yet we had an employee who had their access to public records from the treasurer clerks revoked. I, I'm just, I guess I'm beyond frustrated by that, and, and, you know, I hope, you know, we can recognize the authority of other appointed officials, make sure complete access is given when needed and, and appropriate. And I'll leave that one at that. And then my last, I did a lot of thinking after the last meeting when we ended pretty abruptly. There was a call for a meeting, and it revolved around how we simmer tensions or reduce chaos or not have these types of disagreements. And I, and I think when we look at the firing, when we look at this latest incident, when we look at communications with, with the attorney general, I think we just have to have a broader conversation of, you know, where we're going as a city. Who's going to lead, you know, our city in the future? We know with previous city managers, we always had conversations about secession planning and, and who would be appropriate to lead the city in case the city manager, either a contract extension renewal was not approved, or the, the commission moved for termination. I think we always have to kind of have an idea of where we're going, and I'll put, you know, my cards on the table. Since I've been elected, you know, I got elected at the height of the public corruption crisis. You know, the FBI was, was swarming, commissioners were being removed. I served one day with Commissioner Scott Maddox, and, and there, and there was a transition. And, and I'm looking now of how we can repair an obviously broken institution, an institution that does not follow any of the norms that are best practices of, of any government. So I've always been a proponent that we need an outside city manager. We need someone who can come in from the outside, show a new perspective, go through our city department, identify issues, and make the necessary changes. But now, I would just settle for some normalcy and professionalism at City Hall. Anybody who can just lead this institution and do the right thing in the public's interest at all times in their decision-making and protect the city of Tallahassee's interest. And, and to me, you know, having served here, I think the best person qualified to do that is City Attorney Cassandra Jackson, and I have never said that to her.
Mr. Mayor, on point.
On point.
Is this a forum for this?
Absolutely.
Is there, is there a motion? Is, I think is what, what the commissioner is wondering.
I'm coming to a close.
Okay. Bring it to a closing.
And I've never even, you know, mentioned that to her, because I, she probably, I believe she doesn't, probably doesn't want to do it, but I think, right now, we need somebody who doesn't want to be city manager, but we need somebody who can be city manager and, and do that effectively. So, so, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to make a motion today, but I think we need to lay a marker of how we're going to repair the city government in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
On point. Commissioner Richardson.
Commissioner Matlow, I couldn't disagree with you more. I don't think that this city is broken. There's evidence every day that shows we're headed in the right direction. I was on the commission when I was, I interviewed for the current, well, the applicants for the commission, for the city manager, and I can tell you, Reese Gold was by far the most qualified person for that position at the time. I haven't seen anything since then that would lead me to believe any different, and my evaluations since then have reflected that. We've got employees with this city who are working hard every day, and they are producing when we don't even know they're producing. We're getting recognition from all over the country. That comes from the type of leadership that our city manager and his leadership team are providing. And, and so I don't want to use a forum like this to berate the city manager. If you've got issues with the city manager, discuss those with the city manager, and, and if, if he doesn't improve or show the kind of improvement you think that he should, then continue to give him 1.0s on your evaluation. That's where you do this, not in a forum like this where he can't even respond to what you're seeing. I, I, I don't feel comfortable with that at all. And to say that this organization is broken is so far from the truth that you ought to be ashamed that you would say something like that. We work together collaboratively. 95% of the votes that we take are, are, are 5-0 votes. We may not agree 100% of the time. We don't. But to say that this organization is broken, I, I hope you realize that that's your perception. It ain't mine.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Mayor Protam.
On point to, to respond to what Commissioner Richardson has said. I don't appreciate our city attorney being put on the spot like that either. That's, that's not how she would want to do this, even if she wanted to be, if I were her. He is a very skilled, knowledgeable, smart attorney. Here it is once again. I'm having to say something about a black female in a position that's had to prove that she could do it. She's smart enough, she's good enough to do it against opposition from the previous commission that she could do it, and she's doing a darn fine job. I'll use the word that Dionne uses, a darn fine job. And to put her on the spot like this, I think is unfair. It's inappropriate. I would not want anyone to, 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 to be pitted against one another like that. I think that Reese Gold is doing a great job. Is he perfect? No. Neither am I. Neither are you. So to do this out here, leadership begins at the top. We are the leaders. We set the tone. We set the climate. And if we're not doing it, then we need to look at ourselves, and you cannot set the tone and the climate when you evaluate employees with such poor evaluations without receipts or without details to get an opportunity to improve. And you can only do that by talking to them. But if you refuse to have a conversation and you just talk at them through the media and other places, that's not the place to do that. That's not how we manage. I've worked in government for 30-plus years. There are structures, and we talk about norms. Norms are structures. And so if we want to return to norms, then we need to recognize the structure of how this government is put together, work to improve it, continue to provide great quality of service. Yesterday, the mayor, the city manager, and Commissioner Richardson, across the street over there fighting for our very lives. Where were we? Somewhere else doing something else. So, and these people are working when we're asleep. I know, because I get text messages through the night that something's happened or something's going on. I got, you know, just all the time, stuff is going on. It is unfair. So, Madam Attorney, you're doing a great job. So, Madam Attorney, you're doing a great job as our city attorney. Keep doing the great job that you're doing. And if one day you want to be the city manager, I know you know how to apply for it, right? So if that's what you want to do, then you can apply for it. You apply to be the city attorney. And city manager, you're doing a fine job too. And one day you want to be an attorney, go to law school. Then you go ahead. We can just switch roles. You know? And as a matter of fact, Madam Attorney has shared with me her contract. She's on board for another, how many years? Another two years. I wish I had known that it was coming up, because I would have recommended a raise for you.
Uh-oh.
But, you know, we can talk about that at another time, but you're doing a great job. And the same thing with the city manager. When that time comes, I'm going to recommend one for you as well, because you're making this city move together. Jim, you too. Dennis, you too. Y'all are making this city move. We set policy, and we go home. After this meeting, y'all get together and figure out what it is y'all need to do to keep things moving. So thank you. Until you're better paid.
Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Finish my comment in response.
Commissioner Matlow, I'm asking, please wrap it up. And I want to get the Commissioner Porter as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, just, you know, I was invoked personally. I think this is the appropriate forum. It's a public forum and a conversation amongst commissioners. You don't have to ever wonder what I'm thinking or where I want to see the city go, because I always bring it to a public forum and let the people of Tallahassee know exactly where I stand and exactly where I think. But, I mean, if you have the same emails in your inbox that I do, and you see the same things happening in our city that I do, there's no explanation other than the city is broken. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have something a little bit off topic. I was wondering if, and I don't know if a motion is necessary. I have a friend who is trying to adopt a pet at the shelter, and I have been through this before. And I was wondering, I know we have Ashley in the room, and not that you need to get up. I was wondering if there's any way we could make our application a, like a Google form or something. Right now, our application, you need to be able to, as far as I could tell, like, print it to fill it out for some people. It's not as easy. There is the opportunity to, like, fill it out on the PDF. But if there was any way, it was just a thought that I had, if we could make that any simpler so that people could just sort of submit it, and that could help people apply, you know, apply. That was just a random thing that came to mind. Someone brought that up to me. And so I thought I would just bring that up, because obviously, we want to have people, make it as easy as possible for people to apply to adopt pets. I don't know if there's any comment on that. I just want to make sure.
Hey, anytime we can streamline the system, I think it's a great idea.
Mr. Mayor...
We got the thumbs up. Absolutely.
We'll be happy to follow up on that. We'll get the T and I folks, though I think they probably are capable of that.
All right. Thank you. That's it for me.
Excellent. I will close this out this evening. And let me be very clear. I usually wait to be the last one to speak, to give everyone, you know, I'm learning at this as well over the past four years, give everybody the opportunity to have their time and they speak. So when we get to me at the end, and I just say, I've got nothing more, we're adjourned, that's not ending abruptly. That's just saying, I've got nothing to put into the conversation. It's time to move forward and adjourn the meeting. This was a great meeting tonight. We actually did some really good work. We tackled some very tough issues, and I'm proud of this commission. As the mayor, I am very proud, Commissioner Matlow, of the direction of the city and where we're going. We disagree on that, and that's cool. That's what representative democracy is all about. I'm not going to get into the political fodder. I'm going to close on a high note. Mr. Manager, it was an honor and a privilege to stand next to you yesterday and testify before the Florida House Subcommittee and remind the world that we have the number-one public utility in the nation under your leadership, that we have the lowest mileage rate, that we have the lowest mileage rate of the 10 comparable communities, cities in the state of Florida, but yet we operate a $1.2 billion budget, and you do that with half of the land off the tax roll. That we have the lowest electric rate of all communities our size or larger, public or private, in the state of Florida. I want to commend you that just two weeks ago, you were just named, you and your budget office just received the highest award from the Government Finance Officers Association for Budgetary Reporting, the highest in the nation. I want to thank the police chief and the police department for reaccreditation. We have the longest reaccredited police department continuously in the United States of America. I'm looking at Ashley Edwards, who is part of a nationally recognized Parks and Recreation Department team. I can go department by department by department. And I'm going to end on a high note. And on a personal note, I want to congratulate you for being recognized for your excellence among your peers, for being selected as a member of the Board of Directors of the Florida City County Management Association, which is a high honor for your own peers to recognize your excellence and ask for your service in that capacity. I'm ready to keep moving this city forward. It's been a great day. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we stand adjourned.